Zoom. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on August twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. At seven thirty five P M. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board of the Princeton Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on August twenty third, twenty twenty four. And has been posted to the municipal website, W W W of Princeton and J dot com slash meetings. Pursuant to the extension of the ongoing state of emergency by executive order number two ninety two. In accordance with the Emergency Remote Public Meeting Protocol for local public bodies. To conduct a public meeting without physical attendance by members of the public, notice that during this extension of state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom. Is transmitted to the Princeton Packet and topics and at times and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the twenty fourth day of April twenty twenty. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board of the Princeton Municipal Complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year. And by transmitting a copy of the same to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Ben Tony and Comcast Media and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all windowed, windowed doors of the municipal complex. Claudia, would you take the role?
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson? Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Pennenbaum? Mr. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen? Thank you.
Thank you. We have two resolutions to vote on tonight. The first one is fifty eight dash sixty William Street, Princeton Block forty seven point oh two lot thirty six. R four dash B zone.
Actually, we have three resolutions.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're right.
That's okay.
I screamed, my screen didn't extend far enough, but this is the first one.
Board members, you have in front of you memo from Derek. Which attached to which is a markup of the resolution that was presented to you last month. For your review and consideration, that resolution was carried. Because the applicant had asked for an opportunity to. I guess the best word would be clarify certain variances with Derek. You'll, and so that, for that reason, we thought it would be better to let you see a markup version. So that you could see the changes. Some of them are very minor. Trustees of Princeton University instead of just Princeton University, some formatting. But some revisions have been made to the variances being granted. So I'm gonna turn it over to Derek so that he can explain briefly. Why these revisions are appropriate and why they're consistent with what the board approved.
Thank you, Derek.
Wait, Derek, let me just swear you in for the evening. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do, thank you. It with the drawings were quite a lot of information on them in terms of like whether the setback was to the building or the gutter or the overhang. So we met with the university's architect and their attorney. We clarified that there was an error in my calling out the smaller side yard of four point oh two feet when that was actually the larger side yard. And that was kind of a result of the university looking at one side as a, as a larger side yard and me taking the opposite opinion, but that is an error. It's been corrected. The rest of them are pretty straightforward. If you have specific questions, I'd be glad to address them. Some of the height to setback ratios that were eliminated were duplications of the same information. One was from the front view of the house and the other was from the back, so we just eliminated any duplications. The impervious coverage went up slightly. As the people at Firestone Court, the homeowners association did ask the applicant to leave impervious coverage that had been proposed to be taken off, so. That's kind of an overview. If you want to go in a deeper dive, I'm happy to look into stuff.
Would you say there are any substantial changes?
No, I mean, the, the smaller and larger side yard setback is substantial, but when you look at the site, one side zero and the other side is four feet, so. I mean, it, it's what's on the plans is what was approved and, and this is you know. I guess better than before because we're actually to the gutter or to the overhang and it's clear.
All right, does anybody have any questions? Can I hear a motion second?
I'm over approval.
Second.
Michael Floyd and George Stein, thank you. Claudia, take the role?
You're muted, Claudia.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did you get?
Floyd.
Did you get, Mr. Floyd?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Floyd.
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's it.
Okay. The second one is ninety eight Bayard Lane, block seven point oh two lot eighteen R one dash eight zone. Has everybody read this? Are there any questions? It's not our, can I hear a second? Motion in a second.
I'll move to fifth.
Thank you, Bernice.
I'll second, Michael Floyd.
Michael Floyd, thank you. Claudia, you want to take the role?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The third one is three hundred Ewing Street Blocks, seven three oh three lot four, R eight zone. What, what was that? I'm sorry. If there are any questions, if not any questions, can I have a motion in a second?
I'll move it Floyd.
Thank you, Michael.
I'll second.
Please, thank you.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, our first application of the night. Make sure I've got this right. Is fifteen Stony Brook Lane, block four.
Steve, excuse me. There's a couple items on the, the agenda before that, that need action and two ninety nine Edgerstone is being placed on the agenda. They did. They were placed on this agenda, but they never responded to the notice. So the, the time of this application deadlines September thirteenth, so the board has to act on the application tonight or will be approved by default. So our advice is to deny the application without prejudice.
Okay.
There, there actually is an ordinance pending which would allow the applicant to install the solar panels without the need for variance. That ordinance is about to, I think sometime in September, we'll get its second reading and then go into effect. So I don't think there's anyone here for the applicant tonight. I guess we can ask. Is anybody here? The applicant? I'm looking at the attendees.
I don't see anyone.
No, I don't see.
See the applicant, I don't see the homeowner.
Alright, so.
So we need a motion in a second to reject.
Without prejudice, yeah.
Without prejudice.
Right.
I'll move to reject without prejudice Floyd.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Donna. Claudia, you want to take the role?
Chen?
Yes, yes.
Miss, Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, is there something about forty nine Pardo?
Yes, sir. The applicant had a noticing issue and they will be renoticing and be placed on the September twenty fifth agenda.
Thank you very much. So that takes us to our first actual application, fifteen Stony Brook Lane, block forty nine oh one.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a suggestion. Our last application tonight, twenty two Parkside Drive.
Yes, ma'am.
There is. There is a neighbor who had advised they were going to testify with, with respect to receipt of a notice. They, the applicant. The tax assessor indicated this resident lived abroad. It turns out they no longer live abroad. They are back at their residence. And the applicant asked them, did they get the notice? They said yes, because the applicant inadvertently sent it to them at their Princeton residence, not their overseas residence. So in order, in order not to keep this neighbor here until we get to the application. I'd like to know if we can jump ahead to it simply for the purpose of letting this neighbor appear. Confirm they got the notice. They have no objection to the noticing process for them and then they can drop out of the meeting if they wish, and then we can go back to fifteen Stony Brook Lane.
That'll be fine. Do we know the neighbor's name?
Yes, we need to bring Yagani Hieri over and then the neighbors are Candace McCoy and William Browder.
Great, Claudia, do you see them?
Hello.
Hello, you're muted. Thank, alright, now you're okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're just, we're gonna swear you in now. Do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Alrighty, and we don't see yet. Candace McCoy.
Here we are.
Here you are. Alrighty, and we will swear you in as well. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, and, and also William Browder. William Browder, my neighbor is here. And I'm sorry, I, I just plugged in the computer and I'm having a little bit of technical problem, so give me one second. But William, thank you. Want to say hi, Bill?
Yeah, hello, I'm here.
You will.
Mr. Browder, if you did you have any comments you wanted to make? Because we're not actually hearing this yet. We just wanted you not to have to wait, Ms. McCoy, until the end of the evening to confirm that you had received the notice. So if Mr. Browder or you want to provide testimony in the application, we'll have to ask you to wait until we get to it, but, but for now. Let me just confirm with you, Ms. McCoy. You received a certified mailing.
I did.
By the hearing, correct?
I did.
Alrighty, and you, alrighty, and previously, I guess, you were you were not living at your Princeton residence. You were living elsewhere, correct?
No, that was a mistake in the address.
Mistake in address, okay. But you actually did get your certified mailing, so it's my understanding, and obviously you're aware of the hearing because you're here tonight and that you don't have any objection to the noticing process as it applies to you for tonight's hearing. That be correct?
No, I have no objection.
Mr. Browder's wife, Lisbon, also is abroad, and I think there might have been problems with that.
Well, I, I, I used to have my, my, my tax mail sent to, sent to Denmark and it's not my normal. It's just for the letter that came in, in August.
Okay, you, but you have no objection to the noticing. You, you've been noticed.
Yeah, no, I've, I've.
Alright.
That's fine, so.
Thank you, thank you very much. So we'll leave it to you both if you want to participate in the hearing later tonight, of course you can. But if you don't want to, then we appreciate you're coming forward to confirm that you received it and we'll get back to you, Ms. Hieri. After we hear the other two applications ahead of you.
Thank you so much for doing this. Thanks to everyone for help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now back to fifteen Stony Brook. Karen, are we in order?
Yes, the noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction tonight.
All right, Derek, do you want to present this case?
Read my memo. Yes, sir. I don't need to be sworn, Karen, right?
No, you already sworn.
Fifteen Stony Brook Road is the subject property. The owners are Edward Gonzalez and Elizabeth Trago. Rob Cortino of Cedar Creek Landscapes is the applicant. They are requesting a C one variance to permit the construction of a swimming pool and related pool equipment and a small shed within the front yard setback. Properties in the R one T zone in the former Princeton Township. The subject lot in the house comply with the applicable bulk regulations. The applicants are proposing to construct a fifty by twelve foot swimming pool, pool equipment and eight by ten cabana within the front yard setback. All these items are considered accessory structures and in accordance with section ten B two fifty six point two A. Accessory structures are not permitted within a front yard. And a yard is defined as the open space area existing between a building line. Which is defined as the horizontal projection in plan of all covered or roofed areas of a structure, whether permanent or temporary and the most near adjacent property line. The proposed pool is located within the three hundred foot riparian buffer zone. The proposed plan utilizes a permit by rule in accordance with N J A C seven colon thirteen of the Flood Hazard Area Control Act. The additions to the pursuant to the permit by rule are outlined on page G P three of the submitted pool grading plan. The proposed development has been reviewed and approved by the municipal land use engineer. The project results in the removal of four trees, including two dead cedar, one dead ash and one silver maple that's alive. The removal of the trees requires a permit from the municipal arborist. And the removal of the silver maple does require replacement tree. The applicant should address whether there are any other locations on the property where the pool, the pool could be located without requiring a variance. The plan requires the following variance, the front yard setback to the building line of the house is three hundred and seven feet, six inches, and the proposed pool setback is a hundred and five feet, four inches. The applicant has requested consideration under the C one criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to, to address them.
Any questions to Derek? Who is representing the applicant? I've, you're muted right now.
Hi, this is Elizabeth Trigo. I guess.
Elizabeth, we need to be able to.
Need to be able to see.
I, I can't, I know, I don't know how to do that.
That's a problem then.
Well, I am the, I'm the actual applicant. I'm Rob Cortino, Cedar Creek Landscapes.
Okay, but Mr. Cortina, if we can't see your client, then she's not gonna be able to testify, so.
Well, maybe some. I don't, because it says start video and it has a slash through it.
Push that button.
Push it.
When I do that, it says open system preferences and I, when I press that. I, I just get a bunch of locations, contacts, calendar, stuff that's on my computer. I don't really. Quit and reopen. I just, I don't know.
You can also go through your iPhone.
Oh, well, I can do that, okay. Yeah, sorry about this.
Is there anything I can address as we're waiting to see how Elizabeth makes out here with her iPhone, or do you guys just want to wait?
Um, Mr. Cortina.
Okay.
Alright, well, Mr. Cortina will swear you in. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Alright, and what, can you just tell us your relationship to Cedar Creek Landscapes?
I am, I am the, I'm the operations manager and production manager of Cedar Creek Landscapes.
Okay, and you're prepared to do a presentation to us?
Absolutely, I am.
You, you want to go ahead and get started or do you?
Sure, sure. The, the main thing on this pretty clear little request for a variance, in, in my opinion, is obviously the the required front setback, which the existing is three hundred and seven feet, six inches. And we are proposing a hundred and five, four inches. And I believe you guys all have the engineer plan. Hopefully you guys can see, because I would love to demonstrate to you guys the unique topography and location of the house and the way the lot is set up and show you that there's no place on the property that we could put a pool beyond or any structure for that matter, beyond the required setback.
I think we all have access to it, but if you want to share your screen and share your copy of it, that would be.
I, I have it on paper.
Okay, never mind.
Yeah, sorry.
Does everybody, do all the board members have this access to this? Yes.
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Then you can assume we can see it.
Okay, great. So if you can, if you look in at the plan, G P one or yeah, G P one is the best way. You'll see on the the south side of the house. You'll see the extreme gray change with a topography of the bank of Stony Brook dropping approximately twenty five feet over twenty feet of distance runoff the back of the house. That also wraps around to the west side of the property. And you'll see the bank, the embankment and the disservice of the bank and see the flood plain over there. And then you'll see from the front corner of the house, the existing setback, building setback off the front property line is three oh seven. And then you can see we plotted the pool, the, the proposed pool up here in the northwestern corner of the property. And then you can see from the front set, from the front property line to the front corner of this new proposed building structure line, which is the corner of the pool, we have a hundred and five feet, four inches. For us to get beyond the required three oh seven six inches. There is no space on this property. Whether it be not, not wide enough or extreme grade changes that a pool or any build could actually be installed on this property. So that's why we're requesting a C one variance. And we're proposing the location that we're putting it in because we're trying to work with the existing grades, the existing runoff, utilize the existing mature trees that actually run along Stony Brook Lane and then turn and run down Promise Line Road. We have a tree survey that's included in this packet as well, as well with our, our permit from the township to remove the four trees. But there's thirty to forty mature trees over eight inches in diameter, up to forty inches in diameter that wrap around both sides of this proposed location. So that's one reason why we, we couldn't put it beyond the front setback. And that's why we proposed to put it in this to utilize old growth trees because there's nothing, those trees that are existing are going to stay. They're not going to be removed and they'll become part of a natural screen.
Mr. Cortina?
Yes.
Do you, do you want to make these collectively an exhibit? These are it's a little hard to see on the screen, but these are pages G P.
G P five is the tree survey?
Alright, but it's G, you have on the screen a G P one through G P five?
Yep.
Alright, and they are prepared by?
P R S Design, that's our engineer.
Professional engineers. Okay, thank you.
So there's a good view. If you, if you're, if we're all looking at the same screen now on G P one, there's a good view of the house towards the, the back of the property, which is the north arrow is not on there, so. Would be the south, all the way south, you can see the, the back of the structure, the building, and then you could see all the topographic lines. Each one of those lines is a foot in elevation. You can see how severe it is all through there. You could see the sides of property line, the back property line. And then the driveway property line. And then if you go all the way out towards Stony Brook Lane, you see that is that is the space that is available and that is well within the existing and required setback of three hundred feet and seven inches. But you could see there's nowhere beyond that three hundred and seven from Stony Brook Lane that any new accessory structure would really work. So that's why we're requesting a variance to put in this fifty by twelve waiting pool up in this southwestern corner. And again, we, we chose that location to try, the, the trees that are being removed, there is a tree report and there is a tree survey and we do have a permit to remove these trees. We picked that location because four of those trees are dead or dying. One is in ash. Everything else around that is gonna remain, and we're looking at the tree survey here, that kind of borders along Promise Line and then shoots down Stony Brook for a natural screen of mature trees. Which will be, which will remain. So we're trying to utilize the existing mature trees and put it into an easily gradable location. Private locations, location that's easily screened. And also you could see we've got a rain guard and design for all the new impervious services that all can be handled right in that area. Without disturbing any other thing besides those four trees which are already dead or dying.
Okay. Anything else you want to say?
Um, I, I think that's about it. I think, I think that's, if, if we do get permission to put this pool in, I believe that's the place and I don't believe that it's possible to do within within the conforming to over three hundred and seven feet on the required setback.
Alright, alright, thank you.
Just to confirm, Mr. Cortina, Cedar Creek Landscapes then would be constructing the pool and installing landscaping.
Yes, yes.
Board members, questions?
Question. Um, yeah. I, I saw the specs on the shed. But I couldn't, where's the location gonna be? Is it where the existing shed is?
No, no, it's right next to the pool. If, if we can get G P one back up, if it's not too much trouble. That's the original survey. We need to go to G P one. Is it possible to get that back up? Yeah, I'll just do it on this paper. Oh, there it is. Thank you so much. Okay. So if you, looking towards the top of the page to the left of the, the top of the pool, you'll see a little rectangle with like a little stepping stone walkway to it. If you follow that description up that says eight by. If you follow that description up, that says eight by ten cabana. Do you see the rain garden oval below it?
Yes.
So, that's the rain garden down on the, on the lower left corner. On the upper left corner is, there's a rectangle and that's the cabana right in that location.
So is the cabana and the shed the same thing?
Is it called a shed on, on this?
Yeah.
Oh, then yes. I apologize. I'm sorry. I couldn't even see that. Because there is an existing shed on the other side of the driveway, and I apologize. That is the cabana.
Okay, it's, it's called the cabana on the drawing. Um, but on the separate spec sheet for the shed, it's called a shed.
Called a shed. I, I apologize.
Know they were the same things.
Okay, so. The spec sheet for the garden shed is really the spec sheet for the cabana.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, and, and um, on that spec sheet, how, how tall is the cabana slash?
I think it's eleven and a half to the ridge.
Eleven and a half feet?
Yes.
Into the front yard, okay. Um. Alright. Do you, you're the landscaper, so I don't know if the owner is gonna get back on. But I'll ask you anyway.
Sure.
I can get back on. I'm back on. If you won't see me, but you can hear me if you.
Well, we have to see you. Sorry, Ms. Gonzalez. Gotta see you.
Well, I can't, do you have a question I could just answer without you seeing me or no?
No.
Nope.
Okay.
I will.
Is, can I answer everything?
Well, you're in DROs, you're the applicant.
Yeah, if, if you have the knowledge, I, I, I don't really know that you will. The house was cited in the rear of the lot. Do you know if there's any specific reason other than the beauty of the back of the lot? Is, is there some substantive reasons?
I am not aware of any reason why the house is actually plotted where it was built.
Because, and I'll, I'll leave it at that and discuss it later when the board discusses. The reason you have a large front yard is not because of the brook. It's because the house left you very little rear yard. And that was somebody's purpose decision. And there's a number of lots in this area that the houses are sighted the same way. And any accessory structure is gonna be in front of the house, pretty much. Like this. So it's, it's a man-made creative thing. It's not a topo, a, a topo problem in my eyes.
What about the side with the elevation change?
Um.
From, from the stream bank. Obviously, it's the same thing we're talking about encroaching on these sides. I'm just, just curious.
Well, you're talking about the side, but behind the.
Behind the, behind the front corner of the building, but on the side, and because that's all actual property, but it does the elevation change there is, is severe.
Yes, understand. Okay, I understand that testimony. Um. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, George, you have a question?
Well, I do. Um, if you were to bring the pool closer to the house, how would that affect the, the, this front yard setback issue? Because it seems to me it's quite separated.
It would still be wa- way within the required three hundred and seven feet. We'd have to go all the way back past the front building corner of the existing house to conform to the setback.
All the way back. I'm just saying, it looks, the distance between the pool and the house looks substantial. If you were bringing closer to the house, would you mitigate some of the front yard encroachment?
Well, it would definitely, we'd be farther away from the street, but we still would need a variance.
Uh, the variance would be needed. It's a question of, you know, the degree of of non-conformity with the variance.
The, the degree would be less. I think more trees may be affected if we move it down into the front yard. Um, I think with that place was picked into, picked to try to work with a lot of different things. Um, conserving a natural screen with the, and then also not removing mature trees and not affecting root systems of trees. Also, the existing elevation of the yard, managing um, runoff from new impervious surfaces into a rain garden is, is easier in that location. So that's why we picked there. Um, we're certainly open to alternative locations. But just to explain, that's why we really thought about that location.
Okay.
Other questions?
Uh, yeah, I have a question. Uh, I did not see, and maybe I missed it. Do you have any um, detail of um, the fencing?
The fencing is black aluminum uh, pool code. It's a minimum of four feet. We usually put fifty-four inches in. But that is the fencing for the pool code.
Okay.
The existive, the fence around the property line is actually existing fence. That's deer fence. It's a wood post uh, with wire.
Uh-huh, and um, is, is there uh, any additional landscaping planned? I, I didn't see like a.
There is a landscaping, there is a landscaping plan and it should be.
Oh, I didn't see.
We should have that. That's designed by Dan Strowman. I know it was submitted. Do you have a copy of it here? This, this is called. Alright. This is by Dan Strowman. It's uh, dated nine twenty twenty-three and it's a landscape architect and the plan was submitted. It's called Cedar Creek Landscapes Residence, uh, fifteen Stony Brook Road, Princeton, New Jersey. And the date nine twenty twenty-three.
Okay, but it's not in this GP series of.
It's not. It was a separate attachment.
I see. Okay.
And it has all the plantings around the whole um, cabana, which is, which on this one is called a pool house. Um, stepping stones um, and all the plant material and the patio size, natural, natural blue stone.
Is it possible to pull that up so the board could see it?
I can hold it up. I have paper.
Oh, that, that won't help. Claudia? Do you have that?
I don't have it. It's not submitted to the board.
Ah. Okay. Well. Mr. Cortina, do you know who the landscaping plan was submitted to since apparently it wasn't given to the board?
Um, it should have went in, as far as my knowledge, with all eleven copies of everything we submitted for the variance. Um, it probably went in for the original zoning application and probably went in as a copy attached to the engineering application. And I know engineering was all PDFs. Everything was applied online. Um, I may have.
Well, you are welcome to share your screen if you have it.
I'm gonna try to see if I have that.
Ernest, do you have a particular question about it?
Um, yeah, I was just wondering if, if any uh, landscaping uh, screening is, is, is planned that would um, you know, kind of um, conceal a bit, yeah, can conceal the, you know, all this, all, all this from the, the street. That, that was all.
I have it here and we see. That's just original survey. Yes, I do have it. Alright, give me, s- sorry, guys. Okay, I'm for, I'm trying to get this up for you guys. I appreciate your patience. Trying again. Got it? Hey.
Okay.
Yeah, excuse, excuse me. This is Edward Gonzalez.
I'm sorry, we cannot hear you.
Yeah.
I see it.
Oh my goodness. Okay, sorry, everyone. Preferences. Where does it say? Security and privacy. Now I'm having a hard time.
I'll just share. It's on my screen.
Oh no, it's not sharing.
Well, yeah, may, I mean, maybe if you have it electronically, you could uh, email it and Claudia could pu- pull it up. Is that easier?
Okay.
Here we go.
I got it. Thank you so much for your help.
Ah.
Are you seen?
We can see that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mr. Cortina, so it's your testimony, this plan was submitted to the municipal engineering department?
Excuse me, I'm gonna have to ask for an adjournment because I really need to be able to ex, uh, answer some of the questions that you've been asking.
That's, that's fair enough.
Yeah, I, I made, I, uh, uh, but this is Edward Gonzalez. I am frequently on Zoom calls for my work and I've never gotten a link that disengages my camera, because I tried it on the devices for which I do all my work emails and your link somehow doesn't have, i- i- it comes up differently in my device.
Well, why don't we do this? And I'm not, I'm not sure why there's technical problems at this point, but uh, if that's the applicant's request to carry this so that they can uh, uh, be seen and heard and in the interim, if the applicant could make sure the landscape plan is submitted to the board secretary. Uh, Derek, if it's carried, what would be the next available date?
September twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a question about the landscape plan is, I was planning on just letting the area go wild with just wild flowers.
Okay, well, look.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Ms. Trigo, we can't let you testify because we can't.
No, 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 I, I'm not trying to testify. I'm just wondering what kind of a landscape plan should I submit if I'm not gonna have a landscape.
I, I think you need to speak with Mr. Cortina, because what he's indicated is that there was a landscape plan that was submitted. So rather than trying to resolve this tonight, that's for you and Mr. Cortina to discuss. And then uh, it looks like something was submitted on your behalf. So, uh, if it's being carried now to September twenty-fifth, this will give you an opportunity to speak with him and you can figure out what it is you're doing with it. So.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Thank you very much.
For, for the benefit of anybody who's listening tonight, this application is going to be continued to September twenty-fifth. Uh, the applicant will not be obligated to uh, do any further noticing. And it will be on the September twenty-fifth agenda for a continued hearing.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, you can take that one down, alright. There we go. Uh, move us on to one oh two Lafayette Road, block four point oh one, lots three and four. R one, Ash B zone. Aaron, are we in order?
Yes, the noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction tonight.
Eric, would you like to present your memo?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, the owners Carolyn and Thomas Scrivener own one oh two Lafayette Road. They are the owner and applicant. They're seeking a C one variance requ- or C two, excuse me, variance request to permit the construction of a motor court garage in exception to the ordinance requirements. The property is located in the R one B zone in the former Princeton Borough. The subject lot in the house comply with the applicable bulk requirements. The applicant recently purchased the adjoining vacant lot, lot four. And proposing to consolidate both lots, they're seeking to construct an ADU. And in addition to the principal dwelling, which includes a three-car motor court. Proposed ADU is compliant and will consist of three habitable rooms. Uh, and the proposed area, the F, the ADU is two thousand and eleven square feet. The size of the ADU is less than the maximum permitted size of twenty-five percent of the floor area ratio of the principal dwelling. However, this FAR is based on the proposed new total FAR, which includes forty-eight hundred and nine square feet of living area association with the proposed motor court garage and um, additions. The proposed motor court requires the following variances. Seventeen A, four oh three, H two D, uh, roof height is limited to twenty-five. The proposed is twenty-six feet, six inches. Um, again, motor court, the number of stories seventeen oh three A oh, four oh three, H two D is limited to one story. The proposed is two stories. Um, and there's a limitation seventeen A, four oh three, H two D, which also limits the height of the motor court eve to twelve feet and the proposed eve is nineteen feet, two inches. Um, and there's a prohibition, uh, uh, not allowing habitable space on the second floor. Um, and there is a proposed habitable story above the uh, motor court. And then there's a requirement that limits the length of a facade facing a side lot to forty feet, whereas the proposed length of the motor court is forty-nine feet, six inches. Um, and there's a uh, there is one variance associated with the ADU, which I believe the applicant is taking care of in there. Uh, is a requirement of a window to be within ten feet of the front facade, of the nearest front facade uh, of the sidewall. Um, they've requested consideration under the C two criteria. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Board, are there any questions for Mr. Bridger?
I have one question. Um. The size of the ADU, it meets the township criteria so long as we approve all of the variances for requested other buildings?
Well, the, they're, they're proposing a large addition, which uh, that FAR is what the twenty-five percent of the.
God, I can't hear him.
They, they're proposing a large addition, um, which is calculated into the FAR of the main house. So, uh, the proposed FAR complies with the additions that are proposed. If they're not approved, then they'll have to downsize the ADU to twenty-five percent of whatever the remaining floor area is.
Okay, thanks.
Did you hear? Okay, great.
I got it now. I, I, you're, you're back.
Okay, good. I'll stay closer. It could be me. So, thank you.
Uh, any other questions? Okay, uh, Mr. Ryan, or Mr. Kennedy, I assume you're representing the applicants?
Absolutely. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman this evening, uh, members of the board. Uh, Ryan Kennedy from Stevenson Lee for the Scriven family here tonight. Uh, Claudia, we have one other, it's actually two people behind one uh, zoom camera. If we could move over, uh, Kathy. Um, that'll be our architect and designer will come on um, as well. I see them as uh, attendees um, this evening. Um, as they come over, I want to thank um, you all for hearing us tonight as Mr. Bridger said. Uh, this is a couple of different things for us to look at here tonight. First, uh, the Scriven family is building an ADU um, for uh, their parents uh, to be able to live with them uh, at their home. Uh, and a lot of the design elements that we'll be talking about as variances um, uh, go to in some ways, the design um, uh, as it relates between the main house and the ADU. Um, as well as the ability of their architectural team to match the visual design uh, of the existing home in, in putting the uh, motor court garage together. Um, one element that is perhaps uh, uh, missing, I suppose, from uh, the discussion is that this is currently, you'll notice it's lots three and four. Uh, that's because much to the uh, pleasure of the neighborhood, this group has kind of bought this buildable lot next door and will. That's because much to the pleasure of the neighborhood, this group has kind of bought this buildable lot next door and will be putting their kind of in-law suite there rather than it becoming another potential home kind of right up against their home in the neighborhood. You'll see that, and we'll take kind of a walking tour of a lot of motor courts in Princeton. We can see how they all relate to the main homes. And while there are some I'll describe as technical variances with the motor court design, we hope you'll agree that there, the drawbacks of doing it a different way are much worse and that there's really no negative impact either on the zone plan or the neighborhood, frankly. And I understand we'll have a good number of neighbors here to say that as well. This is a couple that's done a lot of homework to design this in a way that works for the neighborhood. And a lot of outreach with their neighbors too. It's a, it's a great community on that street and a lot of discussions have been had with the neighbors about how to design this in a way that makes sense for everyone. And one of the things that makes sense for everyone is that it's actually quite hard to see from the street. You'll see this is as combined a lot that is four times the minimum lot size for a lot in this zone. And while I think the back and forth that the board had with Derek a second ago about the size of the ADU, there are, I guess, other places without the variances where additional space could be built on the lot. But we'll go through why building essentially over the garage in a way that almost I'll say mimics an attic or comes very close to the definition of a half-story or an attic makes more sense than putting an addition elsewhere, which they could do. And but it doesn't make sense as a way for them to steward and honor the design language of this approximately 100-year, we'll say, historic home. So with that, I'd love to introduce Caroline and Thomas Scriven and also we've got Kathy Vogel and, and our architect Joe Gallagher. Perhaps we want to have them all four sworn in at, at once, if that makes sense?
Sure. Mr. and Mrs. Scriven, Ms. Vogel, and I'm sorry, the other gentleman is again.
Joe Gallagher.
Joe Gallagher. Do you swear? Actually, Ms. Vogel, you're muted. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I swear.
Yes.
And where's Mr. Gallagher?
Right there.
Oh, there you are. Okay, thank you.
Economies of cameras here this evening. So Caroline, Thomas, if you want to briefly introduce yourselves to the board and talk a little bit about your, your goals here with, with creating the space for, for your family to age in place with you.
Sure, I can start. I'm Caroline Scriven. I grew up in Princeton until age 12 and was very happy to move back here about nine years ago. My parents currently live around the corner from us on Cleveland Lane. But they're getting a little bit old. My dad's 92 now. My mom is 76. They're actually celebrating their 20, sorry, their 48th wedding anniversary tonight. So I'm, we're very hopeful that we can give them some positive news after this meeting because as you know, many of you may have experienced yourselves or with friends and other family. It's getting a little bit harder for them to live on their own. And when we were successful in finally purchasing the empty lot next to us, which had been owned by a trust that was impossible to contact for a long time. We became very excited about the possibility that we could have my parents actually integrated and living under the same roof so we can better take care of them. Right now, I literally run around the corner to Cleveland Lane five or six times a day to deal with all the things they need and they really shouldn't be living in an independent, large home by themselves anymore. We also have three boys ages 14, 12, and 5 who see their grandparents all the time. They have their own spaces over there, but they're very much hoping that Grandma and Grandpa can live with us from now on, you know, for the duration. And as Kathy might point out, a lot of the design elements that we have come up with, with Joe and Kathy's, I think, brilliant ideas accommodate all kinds of ADA things, you know, so they can be wheeled around. We have a kind of oversized garage so that we can get them in their wheelchairs in and out of an accessible van. You know, everything is on the same level, that kind of thing. And obviously, we're happy to address any of the concerns anyone has, but we, we hope we've done something really nice with a wonderful old house. And we really do love our neighbors and I think a number of them are on the call tonight to support us because we have tried to include them every step of the way and making sure that they feel comfortable and happy with what we have planned.
And maybe, so first of all, thank you very much for spending your night with us and other applicants. Maybe just adding this sort of secondary considerations. We think it's a wonderful historical home. We want to preserve the look of that both in design, but also by having this set a little bit apart, you'll, you'll see that in the design. We're very lucky to have some really nice green, green space around it with some old trees. I think we'd like to keep as much of that as possible. So that has gone sort of in, into the design. And, and, and I think we wanted to preserve sort of the privacy for our neighbors. So you'll see it's incredibly far, I think we're the most, even after all of this, we remain by far the most setback house. So we, hopefully, we're accommodating a lot of the spirit of the regulation, even where we're asking for the variances. And you know, really thankful that you spent the time to discuss this with us.
Thank you so much. While I assure you that applicants aren't going anywhere, we'd be available. Any questions come later, I'll offer that anyone has any questions for them before we move into our presentation.
Yeah, I have one question. Is the ADU going to be handicap compliant?
Yes, it will need to be.
Yeah, we, we can walk you through the layout of it. There's, there's two bedrooms, so we can have a nurse in there if that becomes necessary. The width of the hallway, so, so, and the ability to put a ramp in if we need to in the garage. They're not in, to be very clear, no one's in a wheelchair yet, but at 92 and late 70s, we're pushing our luck a little bit.
Thanks.
With that, if it's all right, if I share my screen and we mark our one exhibit, our slide deck. With apologies, and I promise we'll get to them very quick. There's the, many of these are rapid fire slides, but we do have 49 of them. One of them says, thank you, but we don't, don't expect to be sitting here for an hour watching the, the screen, I assure you. So before we get to our architecture team, just I'll, I'll ask the applicants to walk with me a little bit just as we orient the board as we usually do to where this are. You know, Caroline, Thomas, this is, you know, just got to yes or no, but we're this is the zoning map here and this arrow points generally to where your house is. Yep. And if you don't mind, yeah, just unmuting so they have to, for the record, we'll have to hear a yes. Like, we can see the, the nods, but, and again, as we zoom in on slide three, we're getting a little closer in as we kind of fall from the sky towards your neighborhood.
Yes.
Next one, slide four, this closer into the neighborhood, and I guess the yellow lot, so the, the red square is your existing home? And then the yellows are all of the motor court examples that we've studied? Is that your understanding?
Yes.
Yes.
So lots of motor courts in the neighborhood, and I guess as we'll all see later, many different examples that challenge our understanding of Princeton's code, I'll say that.
Yeah, and this shows it better. It's, it's two lots of.
So if people can see my cursor, the red is their existing home. The wedge lot number four is the lot next door that you bought from that trust that you're looking to consolidate and not have a, you know, have, have, have an in-laws for neighbors rather than a, a another freestanding home.
Correct.
I think this next slide, slide five, reversed the orientation. But here we're getting a little closer to the neighborhood and I think, Thomas, as you noted, this is, this is the existing home here, set back quite a bit. And, and I think your comment was how many of the other homes are actually quite closer to the street. And I, and I believe you can also probably see here the existing tree line kind of along the front part of your property. And, and on this backside where your pool is that you're looking not to disturb. So both screens the property and provides an area that you'd like to leave alone.
Correct.
And, and maybe just for interest sake, you can also see my in-laws' house here, which is the one we're trying to. Which is this, this, I guess, right above it.
So it, it won't be that long of a, the moving trucks will just kind of have to loop around. Next, and with apology that we reversed orientations again, getting a little closer. Here is your existing home. This is that wooded area which you're not looking to disturb, but you'd prefer not to. And this is the lot that you've purchased on, on this side.
I think the one to point out, there are actually very few trees of this lot because they were all ash trees and came down in last year. So this is, this satellite image is at least two years old. But there are, there are large trees in the front of the lot. Maybe we have some pictures later. And, and, and in the back, but there's, this is actually empty.
I guess this, this next slide shows kind of generally how the new, the new addition and ADU will be kind of overlaid on to the new lot. Like this next slide shows marks where, which part of it would be the garage and which part of it would be the ADU for your, for your in-laws. So it's hard to say what we're looking at here, but this is the front view into your current house from the street?
Yes.
So it, I guess it's safe to say it is fairly well screened. And would any of these trees be removed as part of the project?
No, no.
So here, here's the same view, I suppose, more recently in winter, where you can see a little bit when there's no leaves on the trees. But have an idea of, of, of the homes. Get another view of the current home with the current orientation. Here are some more photos. You can kind of see the front view of the lot next to you that you've purchased. Well, it's kind of wooded in the front. I guess this, this shows what you were saying, Thomas, that the back at where there were some ash trees actually wouldn't really have much of an impact on any current trees. And then looking at the current house, kind of up the front, that view on the right. So with, with that, and I guess unless there are any other questions for the applicants, I'd like to move over to our design and architecture team, if that's all right. But Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to pause again for any other questions if anything's come up.
I want you to keep going.
All right. Very good. So we've got a, a, kind of a dual team here of an architect and a designer that worked on this project collectively. I'll ask if they could both introduce themselves. They've both been sworn in and their credentials and, you know, will be kind of, I don't say tag team testimony, but Kathy is the designer. We'll, we'll, we'll take most of the, the testimony tonight because she's the one who kind of worked predominantly with the applicants on putting this together. And Joe Gallagher, the, the architect of the team is here as well if we have any questions for him. But if you could both, maybe Kathy, you go first and I'll introduce yourself and then Joe, you next.
Hi, my name is Kathy Vogel. Can you hear me? My business is Vogel Design Group. I've been working here in Princeton for about 20, 22 years. I'm background in architectural engineering. But I've been working with the Scrivens on this project and really what I'd like to talk to you is through the through the design of the overall, I have it in 3D CAD, so you can see what it looks like from the outside and different perspectives. And talking through the, the reasons why we did the massings the way we did. And then this is Joe Gallagher behind me. We've been working together for 20 years.
Hi, I'm Joe Gallagher. I'm a New Jersey licensed architect. I've done, been working, you know, in the Princeton area for many years and collaborated with Kathy on this project and, you know, architect of record and taking professional responsibility.
Thank you. If, if Chairman, if it's, if it's acceptable, I'd like to have them accepted. One, I suppose, as our designer and one as our architect of record.
We will accept.
Quick question. Ms. Vogel.
Yeah.
Do you need to be licensed in New Jersey? I wasn't clear if you, if you hold the license.
I'm not licensed as an architect. My background is actually engineering, architectural engineering, but Joe and I work together to submit drawings. So Joe will be the architect of record.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, we do accept both of them.
Many thanks, Mr. Chairman. All right. So now we're on slide 13 here. Kathy and Joe, this, this is the colorized version of the site plan. I understand blue both on the site plan and, and the front elevation is the existing home. The red is the garage addition that we'll be talking about. And the green is the ADU, is that right? And then the yellow part is the existing Lot 4 that the applicants have purchased and that will, you know, essentially bring into the fold here. Is that more or less correct?
That's correct.
All right. So next up, you know, as, as, I'll, I'll drive the bus, but why don't you take us on a tour of, you know, the, we've got some renderings here of, and then get into the plans of what, you know, what you've designed here and, and why and how to meet the needs of this this new type of coming out of combined family arrangement.
Sure. Yeah, so just to start, as Caroline and Thomas already mentioned, one of the primary goals is for the new addition to you know, seamlessly integrate with the existing 1920s architecture. Also not disturb the large circular drive and any of the trees that were protecting the house. So we actually removed several trees from this rendering just so you can see the design, but it actually is quite wooded. The existing house, I'm not sure if you can see my screen, but I, the existing house ends right here with the breezeway. That is the white connector piece. And, and then it begins to, with the new proposed addition at the breezeway. And then the motor court, which is the three-car garage right there. Really, the goal was to integrate these new spaces, also provide privacy between the main house and the ADU. Allow for the three-car garage, which you know, was oversized as we discussed to allow for wheelchair access and van access. And we also were hoping to, you know, have these spaces relate to the main house in that the roof line of the new motor court matches the secondary roof line of the main house so that eve and the motor court roof line align. And we have the same materials, the same roof pitch. And a similar window profile from the front elevation, which is on the next page.
Kathy, before we leave this slide, so the main house is the type of two stories I think most people are familiar with. Technically need a variance to make the motor court two stories, but maybe in describing it, it's, it's quite a different type of two stories in that it's, you know, a story with a, a space above with dormers. Is that?
Yeah, it really appears to be a story and a half. The reason why it's so tall is we do have a higher ceiling height on the lower level primarily to accommodate a van and some additional storage. But also to just mirror that secondary structure to the right of the main massing. I'm sorry, to the left, looking at it from this direction. So you can see it more clearly here. So the, the secondary massing where the arrow is right now is existing. And although the perspective doesn't show it on the flat elevation, you can see that the new garage is actually has the same eve height and same window profile.
And you're saying that was done to, to, to match and relate to the existing house and also because the first floor is actually quite tall and, and to, to make it to the, the windows be of similar type, you have to kind of design it this way?
Yeah. The other nice thing that the motor court provides here that you can see is, is a little visual separation between the main house and the ADU. Caroline's parents are used to living independently and they really didn't want to feel like they were attached to their parent, their daughter, even though they wanted the convenience of being able to you know, go seamlessly from one, one dwelling to the other. So this also affords them some privacy on their side of the house. And then this last slide in perspective is the ADU as seen from the street. Our goal really was for the ADU to mirror the, the size, shape, or at least the shape of the existing dwelling, the same roof pitch, hip roofs, brick exterior, large penetrations, dormers on top, but really at a much smaller scale.
Next, I think we get into the floor plans. Want to talk through what's, what's new and.
Right where the cursor is right now is the existing kitchen that a previous. Um, right where the cursor is right now is the existing kitchen that a previous. Uh, homeowner turned a, uh, garage into a kitchen and mudroom. So that part is remaining in place and then the connector, if you can move the cursor right there. So that's the breezeway connector between the motor court and the existing mudroom. Um, going through there, we have kind of a back hallway. Uh, so the parents can, you know, traverse wheel, um, directly from their apartment to the left. Um, their ADU right across into the mudroom and the kitchen of the main house.
Now, Kathy, if that's a, a great arrangement for, uh, uh, an ADU that's used by family members, but. If, if, if it were in the future not to be used, this could be sealed up and there would be no.
Yeah, quite simply that door right there could either be locked or sealed. So it could become a separate ADU if family members don't live there, but as it is currently, the plan is for them to. Kind of seamlessly be able to traverse between the two dwellings.
And then here in the bottom, we'll, we'll, we'll get to a more blown up version of this. I assure everyone that we can go into a little bit more detail, um, uh. This is the second and third floor plans. I don't want to say third floor. I'd be in the attic of the main house. So that's the bottom, bottom right here.
Right. Uh, yeah, to the left is the second floor above the, uh, motor court garage. And that space is really designed to be like a kid's play space. Um, you know, really what we would all think of is like. The finished basement space, but in a nineteen twenties house with a low ceiling and, you know, not. Great plumbing, it wasn't designed for a finished basement. This allows you to have like a pool table, a ping pong space, um. You know, a teen hangout, family space, um. And then part of the requirements for, for Tom and, um, Thomas and Caroline was that we don't have. That, you know, noisier teen play space above the new ADU. So that's part of the reason why we really wanted to have it above the garage where the noises from ping pong and pool tables don't disturb. Um, you know, older parents.
And this, the space above the ADU, this is a storage and kind of.
It's primarily storage space. We do have, um, a bathroom proposed above the, um, the hall bathroom of the ADU. Um, but in general, that's just quiet storage space.
And that would be, however, this floor though, an attic is, is not part of the ADU. That's, that's, uh.
That's part of the dwelling living space.
So next, I guess we've zoomed in a little bit to the ADU floor layout and. Where the garage is. So I want to take us through in a little bit more detail, you know, how the ADU, particularly how one gets, uh, you know, in and out through the garage with, um, and, and the. Accessibility features that you kind of designed in here.
Right. There's two options for entering the house, um, if the parents choose to park in the garage, you know, if they have a van or something that they need for. The garage, they can either park in the bay on the bottom of the screen. Um, which is oversized as well, so that there's plenty of room on either side and then go through the door and into the vestibule. Um, which is the primary entrance from the street. Oops, and that's.
Sorry, when you say vestibule.
This would be the like the secondary entrance that way. I think the primary way that family would enter would be, um, using the. Uppermost bay and then going in through this door, which it's really only a six inch, um. Plan step or maybe even less than that at this point with the grade, um, which we're planning on ramping if we need to. Um, and then go right into the ADU from there.
And, and part of the reason for this extra space here is so that these, these bays could have, um, uh. And, and room for a, a ramp if needed to to get here, even though it would even be a relatively. Uh, was it small lift, I suppose, only hopefully only a couple inches when the final grading is.
Yeah, we designed the house to be, um, relating to the grade of the main house. So there really won't be much in the way of transition.
All right. So, um, we'll be talking about these two, uh, kind of buckets of, of, of variances here related to the motor court and one. Uh, and again, a design thing, none of these are, no, you couldn't have an ADU or, or, um, or know that the, the space couldn't be built, but the way that. It made the most sense to lay it out, um, resulted in what we would call, what I, I'll call maybe design variances, but. Parts of neighborhood character, um, that we're going to talk through, um, and explain why we've made these choices and why we, we think that they're appropriate for. For C two variances. The first bucket, I guess, is for facade articulation and then. Uh, issues with the motor court garages on, on large lots. So you're all familiar with the neighborhood character. This is the one here for. Sidewall articulation. Yes, it does count for garage, you know, the, the front facade of a garage essentially. And that's the part that we're, we're talking about that needs the variance and both, um, uh. Here you'll see, we've kind of sketched out that this width of this area where forty is permitted without articulation, we have forty-nine. And a half feet, uh, but hopefully on this slide, Kathy, we can kind of talk through. Well, one, uh, on, on the right, we've got the floor plan here. So we talk about the reason why it's a little bit longer than, than perhaps a normal garage or every, uh, uh. Two, talk a little bit about, well, gosh, is it still a, yes, it's a sidewall. That's not a front wall, but it's, it's not one that faces. Uh, you know, a side building, actually. It's, it's quite screened and, um, uh, addresses the main home rather than a neighbor. Um, and then second, I guess, uh, Kathy, you could talk through the. Design elements you've made to it that while don't, well, move in and out and break up the wall, don't technically count as articulation. I know the idea with. Articulation is to move in or out within, if no more than a forty foot left to right span, two feet. Uh, front and back to create some visual interest in the wall. We're talking about the type of. Alternative visual interest you've created here with the, the dormers and the, the, I'll call it the shed roof. Elements and things that you've, uh, designed here.
Yeah, exactly that. Instead of, um. You know, we really wanted to have this large garage for the reasons we talked about. We just wanted to maximize accessibility and access into cars and knowing that transitioning. From a car or a van, especially if you're in a wheelchair, does require extra room on either side. So we really wanted. There to be area on both sides of the garage doors to allow for that. Um, and that really make most, made most sense in a rectangular garage shape. But in order to create facade articulation, what we did is we added a roof above the garage doors. Um, it's two feet deep, that does give the appearance of articulation. And similarly, we have a dormer above, um, that projects up about two feet. Um, and this is actually the roof line that we, um. Had measured to at Derek's request as opposed to this lower eve. So the. We'll get into that, but this dormer also does articulate this space, although it does not in, in and out way. It's more of a up and down. Articulation.
I, I guess, while, while this overhang comes out two feet, it's not the full up and down, so it doesn't count for articulation. Because I'll ask you, if, if you were to do that, would anyone really see it? I guess between the screening or is this a view of any kind of neighboring property?
I mean, from the original pictures, you can see it is a very wooded lot, um, and then also as far as. What neighbors might see, I think it's three hundred feet off of that, that side yard neighbor that would be looking at that. Um, that garage wall. So it's, it's really not facing a neighbor in any way. It's really facing into the courtyard of the main house.
Well, here's, I guess.
Yeah.
Maybe a good example of what someone would have to kind of peer or wade through to, to, to look for that articulation, I guess, when, once it's built. So the, the garage, I mean, it would be kind of, and when I say this area, I don't mean where these trees are, but you'd have to look through these trees in order to see it.
That's correct.
All right. Um, the next piece actually is, is a variance that does affect the ADU. Uh, but, uh, again, is one that, um, we, we think it makes sense not to have a window in a particular location. So. The sidewall fenestration, um, requirement is that you can't go more than ten feet, uh, from the front facade. Without, um, having a window and we have a spot on the corner of the ADU that's about sixteen feet. Um, here it is. Here's the, this side, Kathy is right, this is the side elevation showing that ADU. Um, and, and this is the part that technically should have a, a window. Is that correct?
That's correct. And just beyond, um, that blue wall is the main bathroom for the ADU. So. It would be a matter of, um, you know, putting it a, a, a small window above the vanity or in a shower, which didn't. Seem especially appropriate. Um, the bathroom design does have two large windows facing the street. Um, and really we were just trying to avoid the privacy issues of having a window looking into the. Into the, um, primary bathroom of the ADU.
And I guess this.
Note that the distance between the side yard of the neighbor and the blue square that you're looking at is, is over forty feet. So. Um, there are trees and, uh, landscaping between the two. I don't think there's any reason why anybody really see that, uh. You know, blankish wall, uh, but, uh, that, that is the reason that we didn't put a window there.
And, and while screened and a good deal away, it actually is probably the one activity being in this bathroom that perhaps some, some privacy is warranted between. The closest neighbor at that point. Is that fair?
That's what we believe, yes.
So here, uh, right, this is a rendering you did showing, uh. The most likely kind of angle that someone would kind of get towards this with some of the trees that are there, perhaps not all of them, is that?
Yeah, and this is actually a modest amount of trees relative to what's on the property. There, there's more, but if I put them all in, you'd think I was purposely hiding the house.
And here's the, uh, you know, the pretend there are no trees version, right?
Exactly.
We didn't want to, you know, make it seem like we were hiding something, but this is the reality of, of what, um. Um, you know, what that facade would be like, though unlikely that it could be seen.
That's correct.
All right. Um, next, going back, uh, to the motor court, there are several provisions of height. They are very specific and, uh, uh, I know some effort made in during the neighborhood character. Exercise, there was a lot of thought put into front-facing garages and freestanding garage accessory buildings and. Some, uh, you know, I, I sat through the process myself as an observer, um, you know, attempt to. Create a set of rules for, for motor courts. And as you'll see through our kind of walking tour in a minute. Princeton motor courts are kind of all over the place, but we, we recognize a few kind of design. Statements from it that we feel, even though we don't meet every technical requirement that we, we hit. Um, and so the, the, the ones that we're going to talk about now is whether there is. Um, habitable space above it, and we'll talk about why we think it's better to do that. Whether it's quote two stories and we'll talk a little bit of the difference of what technically is a story and show you what we've done. That looks a lot different than the two stories of the main house for sure. Um, and then the, the roof height and eve height, um, of the, the main roof. Um, and we'll talk about how, why we've tried to, to match, uh, the main home items there. So again, here's, um. Okay, right. This is the rendering of the motor court, regularly looking at it from the view that no one but the owners will see. Uh, but this best shows the design elements that we're about to talk about. Is that fair?
That's correct.
The guests driving up to park in the driveway would, would get a good view of this.
Yes, exactly. That's coming around the, uh, circular drive.
Right. So as to height, um, uh, first we, we. The requirement for, uh, motor court height is twenty-five. Your, you, the way you've designed it to match the other height of the design amounts of the home is twenty-six and a half feet, so quite close, but, um. Obviously not twenty-five feet. Um, the second. Is that it should be one story and you know, here we're two stories and technically it is two stories, um. We are quite close to meeting the definition of attic, but don't, uh, Kathy, if I have it right, the attic definition is a function of this. The height of this spring wall.
That's correct, yeah.
And we are about six inches taller than what would make the five feet, um, possibly put it into a attic category and. Um, and I guess we'll get a minute, get to talk about why, uh, because it's not necessarily space because you put a, a knee wall here, but, uh, why. That roof line was important to you design wise. And then again, the max eve height and, um. A- as applied in Princeton, they're not measuring it from the roof eve, which is actually quite lower, uh, but from the dormer eve. And that's supposed to be twelve feet and to the bottom of the dormer eve were nineteen point two. So, uh, Kathy, help me out with this one, but this was a, a, an attempt to show on the elevations and the kind of renderings. The relationship between the things that we're thinking are two stories, you know, the main house, the top of the roof, the eve. Um, and the elements of this motor court garage. So is that, uh, so walk me through here. The, the orange. Is your matching of this other design element of the kind of half story area of the front house?
Right. Yeah. So the main house has the primary massing and then the secondary massing, um, and the eve height of that secondary massing with the. You know, one and a half story look, um, is that orange line. And what we wanted to do is do, um, carry that same roof line across. And we have the same windows on that second floor level. If we were to lower this, um, what we'd end up with is, is much smaller windows in that space. Um, and you know, we just thought it looked more balanced to have the, the roof line. Um, and the eaves relate in each direction and then also use the same exact, um. Roof pitch and hip to roof detail that's on the main house. So that created the height and the eve height. Um, the dormer height was really, you know, one to let light in and also to create that articulation that we were looking for. On the, uh, motor court side.
So there's also a variance for, uh, not just because it's technically two stories, but to use the space and. You know, I know you, a lot of thought went into this site and, and where, you know, you'd put this other space, uh, you know, at twenty-five percent. Uh, on, on a lot of this size, that there could be twenty thousand square feet of floor area permitted, um. But, uh, so there, there's no, I guess there's no question that the, the applicant could, you know. Create an addition and, and, you know, and then some in, in other parts, but you want to talk a little bit about why you chose to do it. Over the garage in this kind of compact way versus elsewhere on the site.
Yeah, I think, you know, the effort really was, it's already a sprawling home. It, you know, we could. Have located a one-story space, um, as a play space to the right, um, in that orange block, um. You know, we have the, the, the floor area ratio allowable for that, and also we still have additional impervious coverage to allow for that space, but. We felt by stacking it above the garage, it was more conservative and impervious coverage and also just. You know, manage the space a little bit better and the overall look from the street.
But I guess even, even if they were to go over here, they'd be leaving coverage and floor area on the table, and I guess they could.
Yeah, we have seven thousand additional square feet in, um. In FAR that could be built and another over two thousand square feet in, uh, impervious coverage. That we could potentially build, but I think the goal really was to not cover so much of the lot or take down as many of the trees.
Got it, got it. And, and obviously, uh, the, the building in the yellow area, um, which well has trees in the front and there's trees kind of in this. Area screening the front of the house, uh, really, uh, does not impact, um.
Almost no trees in that area.
Uh, so lastly, um, and, and I, we did promise the board a, a, a quick tour, um, uh, these yellow spaces are, um. Uh, other motor courts in the area that we've, we've pulled to just help the board understand. Some of the design elements that are, are seen here, positive or negative, um, a- as compared to, to our design. So here we've got. Forty-two Lafayette, um, you know, we'll, we'll do, we're, we're not here to comment. Negatively or positively on any other homes designed, but wanted to, to show examples where there was, um, likely livable space or, or taller spaces and. In some situations, um, uh, here's some, some street views there, um, showing, um, showing that. Um, here we go to eighty Cleveland, um, again, a, a, an example with. Uh, three bays that's close, but, uh, perhaps closer to the forty foot before articulation. Um, and, but with dormers, uh, in a similar height, uh, situation as ours. And again, uh, Kathy, would, would you say a, a. Relationship of main house to lesser structure that we've kind of shown with our project?
Yeah, definitely similar.
Um, uh, another example with, uh, uh, if you were to measure to dormers likely be above the, the twelve foot. Uh, requirement, um, and again, many of these likely have usable space above, um. Uh, and a, a, an example at seventy Lafayette, uh, unquestionably with, with usable space, uh, above. Um, and, and perhaps, uh, you know, a, a design that doesn't necessarily step back. You know, from a height perspective below the main, uh, that we certainly tried to do and we felt was one of the, at least the essence of what was, what the. Code was kind of looking for in, in having a feature be subordinate to, uh, to the main home. Um, and then we found one around the corner that certainly well exceeds the, the forty feet without articulation, um, which is. um which is again fairly common. Uh uh the minimum that a free car garage would be is about the forty-foot range. Um once you add those extra spaces to the side or multiple other bays, you know, you get into that range. Technically, uh motor court rules do limit you to three cars now, um but um the extra space on the side, Kathy, I believe you designed to allow, you know, for van accessibility, which is, you know, a bit of a new thing. So with that, um uh well, happy to make our our team available for any questions. Certainly, thank you for your time here uh today. Um you know, the story from our end is that this is a a plan to to adapt a a hundred-year-plus old home uh for for modern use with the very unique situation of being able to acquire and consolidate an adjacent lot, uh very uniquely screened um uh from the front yard and and a series of design um choices that we feel uh meet both the intent of Princeton's code uh and the um certainly the requirements for a C-two variance. Uh just in in quick summary um of that, you know, if you look at the the purpose of zoning, just very quickly, we think AC, IJ, and and L with senior community housing construction, um all are advanced um by the the elements of this design. Um it is very specific to this property, both with the screening and the adjacent lot and the the uh area that we'd like to not build on, the the wooded area to to the side. Um uh for the purpose of zoning that I mentioned uh would be advanced from this, particularly in making a space accessible for uh elderly parents. And uh we we feel that there's actually no real detriment at all to these particular design choices and that they they the benefits substantially outweigh uh the detriment, which we we couldn't really think of of anything um that was uh negatively impacted from these things that you couldn't see. And if you could see them, you would recognize, we hope that they, the design choices help relate this historic structure to the new one rather than introducing kind of arbitrarily different height elements to it. Um so again, with that, happy to be available for uh any questions and again, thank you all for your your time here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Do we have questions for the presenters? Or members? Yes, Donna.
Um, Mr. Kennedy, the slides that you showed, when you were showing some of the motor courts, I guess you were showing the ones, the properties that you had in yellow. You also had some properties in blue with some hash marks.
So blue was a function of the mapping software used, those are actually homes that sold re- recently. Um the county mapping system, uh we're not able to turn off blue. That's their layer that says that there was a sale recently, it's it's software that we kind of, I don't say borrow from the system that the tax assessors use. And blue meant it was a recent transaction.
I see, okay, the um the motor courts that you showed, do they predate or postdate the ordinance?
Um, we believe about half of them uh are are newer than the ordinance and the rest and and half of the showed uh don't, but this is, you know, kind of a a rough survey, several of them are post-ordinance um.
No.
No?
I digress, no.
No, alright. They'll predate that, apologies.
Yeah, there's two thousand eighteen, there's almost two thousand nineteen.
Right, seventy Lafayette, which is two doors down, was completed in the last few years.
But you're muted, Derek.
I think that was approved and built, proved before the ordinance took effect and built afterwards.
So then, none of these motor courts with two stories postdate the ordinance? None of them got variances, is my question.
Not that we're aware of, no.
The other ones were, seventy Lafayette was approved in two thousand eighteen prior to the ordinance.
We're we're, we're not aware of any variances like these being granted yet uh or for for this.
So I I just wonder why the ordinance now prohibits that, which they're asking for.
I could take a stab at it, I mean, the uh the whole neighborhood character ordinance was very concerned about the placement of cars and garages, so was primarily concerned about the setbacks and uh this was an opportunity, I believe, to allow people to have front-facing garages. Cause you know, a front-facing garage typically has to be set back sixteen feet or a side-entry garage, which has to be set back eight. This would allow garages to be in front of the building. An exception to those, but it required a larger lot area and it required uh a few other options that uh wouldn't work on smaller lots.
Okay.
Michael?
Yeah, I guess a related question, then. I wanna think there had to be some substantial discussion on rec- you know, prohibiting habitable space? That's just a glaring thing in this coat.
Yes.
And if if you know of anything, Derek, fine, but if not, that's something, you know, we can all shake our heads about it and maybe disagree with it, but it is something that the town responsible parties put in place. And it's, so I don't know if you have any comment, uh Mr. Kennedy, on or or any uh supposition or or anything, I mean, it's just glaring.
You know, again, having uh having sat through those processes, and I don't mean to say that this was one that happened at the end of a long process, when there was a lot of thought on a lot of things. I don't wanna testify to my recollection of of process, ultimately, no. Um you know, and and um in 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 our mind, it is a function of the best place to allocate floor area um in in ways that are not, if the concerns about garage placement and facing are uh appearance and um proximity of structures to neighbors. Um the prohibition on um habitable space, the the sizing, for example, um makes some sense. Um i- in this case, even assuming that those were the the motivations to to protect the scale or to perhaps um uh allocate usable space to to certain areas of a lot. Uh in this unique case, this is the best alternative on from a C-two perspective to use floor area on the site without having a um you know, it would be about a foot and a half shorter and um.
No, I I understood your
Yeah, yeah.
The rationale that you presented uh and the applicant presented, thank you.
Uh Derek, you have anything to add to that?
I I remember the main discussion being on front-facing garages uh and there was limited discussion on on the uh motor court. I I kind of concur with Ryan, it was added in at the end. And I don't remember a lot of discussion about the habitable space, but um it's been six or seven years, so.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions?
Yeah, I have a question, did, could we see the floor plan of the ADU? Has that been presented yet?
Well, I'll bring that back up, absolutely. Apologies for I should have, I should have moved to the slide before I shared my screen, so sorry for the the jumping here. So this, Kathy, wanna maybe take us through it here, but thi- this this portion here, the majority of the screen is is the ADU floor plan.
Oh, okay.
Kathy, maybe this is a good time to just go through it again.
Yeah, I don't know if you have any specific questions that you'd like me to address, or I could tell you, um you know, how the layout works. But essentially, this is the primary great room, the living dining and eating space for the ADU that faces the rear yard. And we also have two bedrooms, so this would be potentially a guest room or a nurse's room with its own bathroom, accessible through a um a wider hallway. We also have a main foyer with a vestibule that faces the road um and non-road facing uh entries uh to the ADU. And then this whole left side really is a large primary suite for the parents who um, you know, once again, just in case we have some mobility issues, like left plenty of room on either side of where the bed's gonna be, a nice quiet closet and a large bathroom with a, you know, curbless shower and room for moving around.
Okay.
From an ADU parlance, it's two bedrooms and three habitable rooms, the the these two bedrooms and the kitchen, living area being the three habitable rooms.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Michael?
Um if allowed to do habitable space over the motor court, there's still, you you have as a right still to build additional space in the future. So it's it's, you know, presenting that, you know, if you use that little space over the garage, that means you, that means now you won't, not so much won't, but do an option of building additional, but you'll still be able to do it. And and have the habitable space over the garage and, you know, when the, when the code says not to have habitable. I I think that's a
Okay, I I can only give you what we what we were thinking, we we thought it would could mean, we could keep more of the uh green space, I have zero interest in building anymore. This is, I didn't love, if I didn't love my in-laws, uh quite frankly, this, yeah, so um I I I can only tell you um what 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 our intent is and and why we thought, why we thought through it this way. And we quite frankly, wanted to keep it compact and minimize what is very nice area and and so um that that was sort of the trying to find trade-offs between what we can do feels is more from the design and 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 look, I understand a lot of regulations, we tried to, we tried to work in the spirit of it and 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 that that was sort of the intent behind it, why we thought that was a good place to put it.
Yeah.
I will also say, I'm not quite sure what the definition of habitable space is. Everyone we know pretty much who has a motor court or any garage has some space above it. I don't know why it's not considered habitable when people are habiting it with those dormers. And and to Derek's point, the these houses we showed may not have come after the ordinance change, but if you drive around it, houses that are currently under construction, there are some motor courts with dormers that are clearly gonna have upstairs spaces. And maybe they got them classified as addicts instead, I I don't really quite understand why one thing is what. Um so I I, you know, and having not been there at the time of the of the decisions, I don't, I don't know what the rationale behind it was, um, you know.
Well, people, people do do things illegally too. Just
Not when Derek's watching.
And and the difference between illegal and doing it legally is whether or not we grant a variance or not grant a variance. But a lot of people do a lot of things illegally and it's glaring, but we can't police it all. That's the answer.
That's sad.
Well, we, we don't wanna do anything without following the rules, so that's why we're here, so.
And we greatly appreciate that.
Donna, do you have another question?
Yeah, I have one more question, um the length of the facade of the garage, I see the garage, you've got three bays and two of the bays are oversized. Um if you only have one bay oversized, would it maybe diminish the amount of variance you needed?
Kathy, I'll let you ask, answer that, I I guess if you shorten it, it would, I mean, it would, you would, I guess that variance is is kind of a you know, yes or no one, when anything over forty requires it, if it, you know, if we were forty-five, it would be, I suppose, slightly less. Uh but you might wanna speak to that a little bit, I think, you know, that that, one of the, I think one of the design ideas was with, one bay would be used likely with a wheelchair-accessible van closer to the house to get in through the other way, you know, through internal and the the second extra-sized space would allow the same thing. But if if it was, you know, if the ADU door was closed off and it was someone, uh you know, like a a, you know, twenty years in the future, uh a a rental or something like that, um would be, it wouldn't be accessing the ADU through the the main house and would perhaps have a van in the leftmost space.
Yeah, I think that Ryan pretty much summarized it, and we really just wanted to have the flexibility of having, you know, being able to come in in either direction with a wheelchair um and, you know, also, you know, this is gonna be a house that has three growing boys, um two grandparents, a nurse, parent, you know, we're gonna have a lot of garbage cans and bikes and sports equipment and who knows what else in addition to wanting it to be wheelchair-accessible. So we were just really trying to create a space that allowed everybody to have what they needed.
Thanks.
Other questions? Alright, we may get to more questions later, do, Mr. Kennedy, you wanna give a? No, okay, we'll uh close this session and open it up to public comment. If there's somebody in the public who comment, public who would like to speak, please hit the raise your hand button, the raise hand button, and we will transfer you over to this screen.
Can somebody explain in a little more detail, because I know some of my, our neighbors are on, um and
Okay, I'm on.
Oh.
They'll, they'll, yeah, they'll, they'll be brought over, don't worry.
Okay, who, who, who are we hearing from first?
This is
Says Carol Anderson.
Well, Carol's my wife and we're um our neighbor, we're neighbors of the scrivens across the street on one oh one Lafayette Road.
Alright, we just need to swear, we just need to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we've known the scrivens since they moved in, what, six, seven years ago? I forget how many years now, um.
Nine, Steve.
Nine? No way. Um, sorry, anyway, um and we think they're great neighbors and the only thing that we really didn't like about them as neighbors, or it's not their fault, is that the house they're currently live in this doesn't have a garage. And so this is a great plan for them to have a nice garage and then also to have Caroline's parents live with them. And so we're in favor of it, I think it's gonna improve the neighborhoods, better than having a, another whole big house built in that little small lot there and um it's gonna keep everybody happy in the cul-de-sac.
Good, thank you very much. Why do you, do we have other people who would like to speak? Uh Mrs. Hell? Did I pronounce it?
Yeah.
Uh, we need to swear you in.
Give us your address first, please.
Eighty-seven Lafayette.
Alrighty, and do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I live across the street, kind of uh on the diagonal. So my house would be across from the lot that they've purchased. And I'm quite thrilled, actually, that they've, with the plans that they've set up and the proposal of how they laid out the land, especially because when I look out through the front of my house, I can see that lot. But with the amount of trees and the way they position their 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 unit and their garage, it's gonna actually be lovely. And the best part of it, this entire plan, the the most thoughtful part of of this plan was that there's not another driveway coming right down um into that um that traffic pattern, there is no stop sign at the end of this, on on that corner coming around. So the traffic coming down comes quite quickly, so to add another driveway and 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 extra traffic would really and a big sort of another structure would really Uh diminish, I think, our neighborhood, so this is really cool, we're very grateful and and it's a really nice design, so I just wanna be in full support of it. For them.
Thank you very much. I saw somebody else, oh, Rachel Grossman?
Yes, I don't know, can you hear me?
Yes, we need to swear you in.
Yeah, okay.
With your address.
Yes, first address, please.
Eighty Lafayette Road.
Alrighty, and do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So I'm the closest neighbor to Caroline and Thomas and I've, you know, lived next to this lot for actually twenty-five years. I actually bought half the lot to build my house on, and I understand that there's several variances required to. Um, be accepted to um accept the design they proposed, but. I think this design is far superior to to the idea of building a large house. As was built at seventy Cleveland, that took up every inch of buildable space. And I think the design and the variances that, you know, uh have been proposed. Actually ha- are the best aesthetic for the neighborhood and probably the best dynamic for the entire area, so. The question about the habitable, habitable space above the garage is is true, but on the other hand. We're utilizing that at the expense of a large surface area house, which takes up every buildable inch. So I completely endorse it and I'm the closest neighbor.
Good, thank you very much. Uh, Claudia, are there any other neighbors who would like to speak?
Yes, Christopher Green.
Christopher Green. Uh, state your address.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'm at eighty-nine Cleveland Lane, my name's Christopher Green, I'm speaking on behalf of my wife Ariel Green. As well as my mother-in-law Ivy Lewis, who's at ninety-five Cleveland Lane. And we are the immediately adjacent neighbors to the rear of um of Tom and Caroline Scriven. And we really wanna strongly express our support for this really thoughtful and elegant design. We're thrilled most of all by the desire by Tom and Caroline to really maintain some of the beautiful greenery. And trees that both of our properties can enjoy and we are really strongly in favor of being able to have. Their design, reduce that footprint like they described, not extend into all of the usable. Uh floor area that they could and to instead be able to maintain some of that beautiful landscaping. That they so wonderfully steward for the neighborhood, we also have very small children, I have a four-year-old. And a one-year-old daughter, we're thrilled to keep the traffic in the neighborhood reduced and to see the properties remain within a family that. Is as dear and long friends of uh my wife's family. Um, through through uh many years, so we're strongly in favor as another immediately. Adjacent and immediately impacted neighbor to the Scrivens, thank you.
Now, thank you, Mr. Green. Anyone else, Claudia?
I see no more hands.
Okay, we will close the public comments, Mr. Kennedy, you have anything else to say?
No, just to thank you all again, um, I I I hope that the the testimony from the neighbors um helps buttress the. Arguments that we're making here about these C-two variances, they're ultimately designed choices that. Not just don't negatively impact the surrounding properties of the zone, but as you've, as you've heard benefited. Um, uh, Mr. Floyd makes an excellent point, um, you know, that someone else could in the future come and expand the house. Further, I suppose, as of right, um, and there's a lot of designs that could be done as of right that wouldn't have brought us to this board, but these couple. Waited the the time to do the design that they felt made the most sense for the neighborhood, uh the most sense. For their growing family, um, and and for their property to reduce and and. Um, uh, keep uh it as forested as possible, particularly in that rear. Side area, which would be the obvious place to expand otherwise, um, and the other uh design elements, um. No one would really see, but but I think those who do see it. All tend to agree that they're actually positive additions to match the roof lines, to articulate um the front facade in this way. Rather than just arbitrarily stepping it out to the, which they could do and not need any of those variances, but to do it with dormers. Um, and the overhang is is something more in keeping with the design of the home, it it gets the, a similar. Visual function for those who could even see it and allow it to relate to the main home. Um, so for for those reasons, um, we, we, we hope the board uh agrees that this. Versus the, you know, many uh have less thought out and as of right options that they could kind of build. Um, you know, wi- without coming to the board, uh makes a lot more sense, uh fits the needs um um and supports the needs. Of of the neighborhood of this family and allowing someone to age in place here. Um, and um the design elements that respect this kind of historic home at the same time. So, but thank you all for your, for your time tonight and much appreciate um uh you working with us here, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, are board members, any other questions for the presenters? If not, we will go into executive session and. Like to hear what you all think. Donna?
Um, Derek, is it realistic that the lot were not consolidated? Into the Scrivens lot would support a normal, you know, normally sized home?
I'd have to check the size of it, like, let me, uh.
I mean, just uh not detailed, but you know, the neighbors are are kind of basing their. Um, support on the fact that this is so much better than having. Another freestanding single-family house. And I'm just wondering, would that be realistic on that lot?
I- i- if it helps, I know Derek, while Derek's looking, it's it's about a twenty thousand square foot lot, so at twenty-five percent, that'd be a five thousand square foot house that could be built there.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ryan.
Any other comments? Oceans? Michael?
As, well, um, one comment and it's okay with me, I. I I see the neighbors are still on the screen and part of this discuss, you know, here. Um, shouldn't they be? You know, we normally drop them from. This part of it, but anyway, to to move on, um. I'll be surprised if. Having the space be. Not be habitable will kill this application. So, um. I can support. The other variances, I cannot support sort of this blatant. Uh, part of this code. So, that's, that's my brief comments.
Thank you. Other comments?
I, uh, yeah, I I I do think this is a a sensitive, uh. Well-thought-out solution to um, to the site and and the neighborhood. I see what um. Michael is saying as far as the um, the 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 struggle to reconcile the um. Uh allowing the habitable space uh above the garage, but I. I do think it it is a better, uh. It it it's it's um, a more sensitive uh design solution for the property. Than to expand that kind of rec area as as a new space, but um, I'm, yeah, I I. See the issue there, um.
I agree with that issue, I but I think that the design is terrific, I think it really works and looks nice and and all that sort of stuff. The question, of course, Michael, is we say you can't use that space and. You know, like you said, then you'll illegally use it and I don't know what you do about that. So therefore, I I kind of supported this because they're asking for it and not trying to go around the rules, so. I would support this.
Well. I hear.
But I know what you, I know, I understand.
Already said they wouldn't illegally use it. And there is no proposal in front of you to build an addition on the other side of the house. So that's, that's not a fait accompli. Or, you know, it, yeah, but I I understand what you're saying. And this is not the first time this habitable space has come up. And it will keep coming up and. But, vote as, vote as you decide. The code will still be there and it's just. Lack of way.
Other comments? Ocean?
Is the plan workable for the applicant? If you lop off that second story above the garage?
Well, I'll I'll say that, that plan would, I guess, kind of remove all of the elements that we've been talking about tonight, so I I don't know. It would, it would be a redesign and probably an as-of-right design that would have to go elsewhere on the property to get what they need.
And and to clarify, the proper, what I was saying was not lop it off, cuz I would still be voting for the height. Um, as, it's just the habitable question, which the code says it shouldn't be. I'm not saying lop it off.
Ocean? Oh, go ahead, Donna.
So if, if, if board members like the plan. Because they dislike the alternative of putting the room on another part of the property. Is it appropriate to, or even are we allowed to say? You can't, you know, the applicant will agree not to further. Um, no, Karen's saying no.
I, I, I don't see how, I mean, right now, the house and the lot are completely compliant. Um, I was gonna ask Derek, how much square footage now would there be if the application is approved? I think the question was asked previously. Is the, what's the total square footage of this consolidated lot, that's, I think the answer was twenty thousand square feet. So that a five thousand square foot new home could be built there. But how much is the square footage now? With what they can build, you know, what they're presenting tonight?
The existing size of the house is is fifty-seven thirty-six, five thousands, seven hundred thirty-six square feet. The proposed principal dwelling with the ADU and the addition would be twelve thousand five hundred and fifty-six square feet.
How much, Derek? I didn't hear that.
Twelve thousand, I'm sorry, Derek, say it again.
Uh, I'm sorry, the proposed dwelling with the ADU, um, the FAR would be twelve thousand five hundred and fifty-six square feet.
So, um. If I understand this correctly, right now, they would have over twelve thousand square feet, but. If they began again. They would only be able to build a five thousand square foot new home? That doesn't, that.
No, I don't know, I mean, the existing house is fifty-seven hundred square feet.
Okay.
Proposed is twelve thousand five hundred square feet, they could actually. Build it, the FAR is twenty-five percent, they could build, uh.
It's a, it's about twenty-one thousand square feet, that total that could be built.
Okay. I think Donna, the the problem is that. If they can build it as a right. Uh, I don't think the board can tell them, give that up. If you want these variances for your motor court, you can deny the variances for the motor court or you can. Design, den- deny some or all, but uh, the board can't. Uh, use that as leverage to say, well, you can't, you won't be able to build as a right. You know, so choose, choose building as a right, which apparently they could build out further. Or choose your variances.
Thanks, okay, I understand.
Um, I have.
George?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Bridger. Which is, if the ADU is two thousand something square feet. Then doesn't the main house have to be like eight thousand?
The main house is ten thousand and change. Ah, maybe additions.
Yeah, so no problem, got it, thanks.
Good question, George.
Other comments, questions? Oceans?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that. We approve all the variances except. The request for a variance for habitable space over the motor court second floor.
I'll second Stein.
Got a motion and a second.
Any discussion?
So what exactly does that mean? It's up to them on that. It means they can go forward with everything except for habiting, you know, making the uh motor court space habitable.
But they can use it as an attic space.
Yeah, whatever is permitted.
It's pretty simple. Any other discussion? If.
So, uh, yeah, when, when you say use it as an attic, so. What would that include, Derek?
I guess it has to be unfinished space, I mean, I don't. With, I don't know, I don't, I'm dumb.
Well, so I mean, I, I guess the question that's, that. Maybe is behind this is, if you're approving two stories. I mean, Michael, it was your motion, so you wanna approve two stories, but I guess the question then is, so what are they doing with the second story? If you don't want it to be habitable.
Well, I'm not sure that's the question.
Okay.
The statement is, you can't have it, you know, you can't make a living space. Other than that, it's whatever, you know.
Okay, but they need a, they need a variance for that second story, that's not as a right, they need that variance.
And I'm saying, I'm saying approve that. Well, you're saying that space can't be finished, it can't be drywalled, it could just be insulated and. Whatever normally, normally keeps a space in the zoning officer's eye. As not being a habitable space, that's not a new concept. So whatever criteria is used. No, typically, it's by space, by the nature of itself, it's unhabitable, like an attic with mechanical equipment within the space and uh. Or that ceiling height is less, so, or a door doesn't lead to it, maybe it's a scuttle, I, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out. Where to go with this, if it does get approved, and it comes to my desk, what do I?
I I also gotta note that that building a second story that can't be used is not economically feasible, so that the the applicant just wouldn't. Be able to do that, you know, there's, there's costs to building another story, um, and to to build one like a false. Unusable second story is 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 not economic, you know, and they'd probably be back. To Derek's office, but not here, to find another place on this property to to use, have usable space for their kids to play, you know, ping pong or. Or whatever their needs are.
Or not build the additional space. But that's, that's their call. So if if you're saying, basically, and 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 Derek. Well, what I propose only works, you might as well say you can't do two stories. Then that's part of the mo- then I can amend a motion to that. But that's, that's you guys asking for that. And if that makes it more workable, then fine, I'll agree to that.
Uh, I have a question in terms of habitability, I presume if it's not heated. Um, you know, that would be, or or cooled, that would be not habitable, among other factors. That would make a living space habitable.
But possibly, that certainly would make it unhabitable, I'm just saying that no one's going to build a twenty. But positive, that certainly would make it unhabitable. I'm just saying that no one's going to build a twenty, the design that you saw. With the eaves and dormers like that don't make any sense if that space can't be used.
Well, in fact, that it's not heated or cooled, you can use the space for storage. And when its temperature is fine, you can play ping pong up there, but you know, you can't live there year round.
Uh, let me just get a clarification. If we have a motion and a second. If we vote that motion and second down. Then can we have another motion?
Yes, you can.
If, if, if we don't, if, if I could just add one more point that our, our, our team just made, that counting that space as habitable floor area. Um, also is, I'm gonna say necessary, but the ADU calculation fails then at that point, and I don't know that. If that is not floor area, that this design that we presented with the ADU of that size actually mathematically works. And it would be some other, probably use variance to grant an oversized ADU at that point. Apologies for extra complications, but a, a student person on my chat here pointed that out, that, you know, the. We would almost have to build another addition to get the other main house floor area to have this ADU design at that point.
Against this because I, against this motion.
Are we calling for a vote or?
You talked about it before the motion was made.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
We should all vote before we discuss another motion.
Okay, could I just clarify? So the motion right now is. Uh, Michael, is it approval of all variances except for habitable, habitable space over the motor court, or did you say? And only one story?
I never said only one story.
So the motion is.
They said there was, there was no reason to approve two stories. Quite honestly, if you approve, if you wanna approve one story, fine, or, um, you know. That wasn't my.
Okay, got it. All right, so your motion is.
I will go there if they say, if it's, if it's, why approve two stories if you're not gonna be able to use? I heard that.
The thing is, there's a motion now that the board has to vote on. So I appreciate, I understand, I heard it, Mr. Kennedy said two, but. For the purposes of voting. We just need to know what the motion is. So your motion was move approval of all variances except for. Allowing habitable space over the motor court, and George gave that a second.
Yes, you're right.
All right, so.
I'm fine.
Want to vote now, or do you wanna discuss it further?
Let's vote.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Chen?
Uh, no, I, I'd actually support the full, uh, request.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
No.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes.
Now, this project will not be built in anything that approaches what you saw here tonight, unfortunately. Thank you for your time, but.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Okay, we're gonna take a five minute break. We'll convene again at. Nine fifty six. I hope we didn't lose Bernice.
Hello, sorry, I have.
Okay, we're all back. The next application is twenty two Parkside Drive, block nine nine oh one, lot six. R dash three T zone, Princeton Battlefield, H D. Karen, are we in order? Karen, you're muted.
There we go. Yes, the noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction tonight.
Thank you very much. Derek, would you like to present your memo?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, Reason and Yagani Haeri are the owners and applicants, twenty two Parkside. Drive, they're seeking C one and C two variances to permit the construction of a new single family dwelling on a lot in exception to the required lot frontage. Um, and an in-ground pool is proposed in exception to the required accessory structure setback. The property is located in the R three T zone in the former Princeton Township. Land use ordinance, the subject lot has two frontages on Parkside. The frontage on the western side of Parkside does not comply with the required one hundred and. Fifty foot lot frontage, the existing is forty nine point nine five feet. Um, the lot's currently vacant except for historic garage and historic well building. And the, uh, the remnants of an historic windmill are located on the western section of the plot. Property is located in the Princeton Battleground Historic District, Battlefield Historic District, and. Elizabeth Kim is here this evening to present the Historic Preservation Reviews Commission's report on that. Applicant is proposing to construct a one-story contemporary style, single-family home. With a fully finished basement featuring five bedrooms, a kitchen, living room, dining room, family room, study. Five bathrooms and in-ground pool. Um, the lot does not comply with their frontage. On the western side, it requires a variance requirements one fifty, the existing is forty nine point nine five. Applicants should advise if they have contacted, uh, adjacent property owners. To determine if they would sell any property to lessen or eliminate the variance or in alternative purchase of subject lot. The subject property, um, has two frontages, which equates to two front yards in the driveway and the front entrance of the house oriented to the east, however. A pool is proposed to the west, and it's similar to the. First case we heard tonight, um, the pool is considered an accessory structure and it's not permitted within the front yard. Uh, which is defined as the distance between the lot line and the nearest building line, um, of the house. The required setback would be one sixty five point five feet, and the proposed is one oh five point five feet. Just a bit of history, this applicant appeared before this board in April twenty seventh, two thousand twenty two. For a lot frontage variance, which was approved, um, the design never moved forward and the applicant is seeking. Uh, the same variance relief while presenting a new design. The pool was proposed in a similar location in the previous application and was permitted, however, the accessory structure ordinance was revised in the interim. Uh, necessitating a variance. If you have any questions, um, I'd be glad to address them. Uh, there's just one note, there's a water easement that appears to be located where the new home is proposed, the applicant should address. Whether it is active and if not, whether it can be removed. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Any questions for Mr. Bridger? Uh, do we wanna, just Kim to make your presentation now?
Of course.
Let me just swear you in, Elizabeth, like. I can, you're not muted, you're on both, yeah, okay. Elizabeth, uh, do you swear from your testimony this evening? We'll be truthful.
I do, thank you. So as Mr. Bridger stated, this application is coming back for a second design, the original design that was approved. They never moved forward on it. Um, they came before HPC with a concept review on April eighth, two thousand twenty four. To discuss the reason for why they're coming back with the change and, um, the applicant, I'm sure will address this, but, um. What they had presented to HPC at the concept and at their formal review on August twelfth of two thousand twenty four is that. They, um, there were some design criteria that they wanted to, um, perfect. And they also needed a patio in the back and the previous design, which had a larger footprint. And impervious did not allow for them to build that because they had already maxed impervious out, so they, they have to come for variance for that. But I'm sure there's more that they will, um, talk to your board about, um. Uh, the property does contain three historic structures, a garage, a pump house, and a windmill. In addition to thing, the Princeton. Um, Battlefield Stony Brook Village Historic District is also in the Drumthwackett Outbuilding Historic District known as a Farmer's House and Dairy. Some of the changes from the previous design is the existing gravel driveway that accesses the. Existing historic garage and the existing fieldstone walls adjacent to this garage and pump pass will be removed. And a new driveway access installed in front of the proposed house. Um, there were two members of the public who spoke. At our meeting, um, some of their comments was that they were concerned about the implication of the design. In relationship to the battlefield and the neighboring properties. Um, and there was another neighbor, adjacent neighbor who was concerned, they felt that. The new design, the multi-color, the multi-level design. And the material was less recessive than the original design. Um, with HPC reviewing this and the presentation made by the applicant, they did support this unanimously with one extension. Um, but they did have, um, several recommendations which are in the memo. They requested their all LED lighting be twenty seven hundred kilvin. That any new fencing, um, not be physically connected to any of the historic structures or to, you know, the garage or the wellhouse. All utilities be underground. Some additional information added to the south elevation drawings relating to the exterior stairs. Um, but the applicant should also include in their drawings gutters. And roof drains and where that would be discharged on the property, and that it should not be directed towards any historic buildings. On their property or the adjacent properties. They also asked that a proposed grading plan be available for HPC to review. Just to make sure that it is in keeping to the landscape of that property and the, um, the battlefield. And while HPC does not recommend extensive landscape on this, they felt that there would be. Appropriate landscape that would benefit the improvement. To the property on the site in addition to creating some buffers. To retain the historic character of the, uh, the battlefield. And, uh, the HPC also was recommending if your board. Would like that they'd be happy to provide a subcommittee to work with the applicant. Otherwise. That was all the comments that HPC had, and I'm available for any comments that you may have.
Uh, thank you very much, Ms. Kim. Uh, any comments, any questions for her? Okay, before we move forward, Derek, could you review again what we approved the first time and what the difference is? That is being asked for now?
There was, the board approved a lot frontage variance on the western side, so same dimensions as it, as exists today. Um, there was a pool. On the plan known as previously approved, however, in the interim, the ordinance changed, which. Doesn't permit pools which are accessory structures within the front yard, which is defined as the. Closest point of the building line to the, uh, most adjacent nearly parallel lot line. which is defined as the closest point of the building line to the most adjacent nearly parallel lot line.
Thank you. To the applicant, are you ready to make a presentation?
Hello again. Thank you so much for having.
Haeri, I didn't want to interrupt you. If your husband's going to testify too, we'll swear him in now. I know you, I swear you in previously.
Yes.
Hello.
Do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much again for your time. We realize it's late. We do have our architect worked with us with the new design here and before going forward, most of you look familiar. I actually checked and, you know, it's been two and a half years since last time we were here in front of the same computer with you guys. So, you know, I'm, we live in Princeton. We've acquired, we bought this lot in two thousand twenty-one. We went through the entire process with HPC and zoning board as it was mentioned back then. We had to make adjustments because mainly because we figured that with the old design, we're not having much of patio space and the house was frankly too big, which was, I believe, one of the concerns last time around. And it's the two of us. We have two daughters, eight years old and ten years old. They keep asking every day when we would build our house. So they're anxiously waiting. And, you know, in terms of other stuff, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I don't want to get more of your time. So Jeff, if you help us please with the new design and the presentation, we would appreciate.
Well, Mr. Fleischer. Yeah, we will. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
And just for the record, I've appeared in front of this board before. You may recognize me.
Yes.
You're a licensed architect.
I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
And you were previously accepted as an expert in architecture by this board. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Alrighty, and you are the architect of record for the project.
Correct.
Alright, thank you.
Okay.
Just going to share my screen.
It's up.
Okay. We're at twenty-two Parkside Drive. It is a unique site, being that it fronts on two sides, but it's not a corner lot. So it fronts in along Parkside Drive and then Parkside Drive loops around and then it fronts on the other side. And it's also unique because it's a six-sided site within a regular shape. So this is the existing site that you see right now. This is a photograph showing the existing driveway on the left side of the property and the, one of the outbuildings in the background. This second photograph is looking from the other front yard, looking back onto the site. We have the well building on the left and the garage on the right and then the adjacent building. That's not on the property. This is a side view of the site, looking at the garage, the historic garage that we're maintaining as well as the historic building in the background. This is the other building that's the adjacent, on the adjacent property. I'm gonna blow up the garage. This is our well building. And this is just to put this in context with the neighbors, thirty-four Parkside on the right-hand side and twenty-five Parkside on the right-hand side. Our lot is this wooded area. Twenty-two Parkside. This is a photograph from Parkside looking into the site. You can see that it's a slope site. So with the design, we're taking advantage of the slope to provide for a walkout basement. This, this is the other frontage, the smaller frontage, and you can see it's heavily wooded. This is the side that the pool would be on, but the pool would be about a hundred feet away from the property line. It would not be visible from the street. And this is our proposed site plan. You can see that the front, the first front yard on Parkside Drive is ninety-three feet, ninety-three-point-seven-four feet, and the other frontage is the forty-nine-point-four-five. The, the lot with, at the building, depending on which side you take it from is approximately a hundred and sixty-two feet across. In this site plan, you can see we have our existing stone driveway on the left-hand side. We're going to eliminate that driveway and cut a new driveway in on the right-hand side of the property that'll come across to a side-facing garage. We'll also provide a few parking spaces in the front of the residence. As Derek mentioned, it's approximately thirty-six-hundred-square-foot home, five bedrooms, three bedrooms on the first floor, two bedrooms on basement level. The house at its highest point will be approximately sixteen feet above grade. And that's due to the, the natural slope of the property. So we'll have a walkout basement on the left-hand side. This is a front and rear elevation. These are the two side elevations, garage side elevation and our left side elevation. And then these are a few renderings just to show the, the building in context. We're proposing to use similar materials to the adjacent historic buildings, but use them in a modern context. Various perspectives of the building to show it in context with the historic buildings on the site. And then this is just a proposed building materials, stucco, cedar, red cedar wall at the garage. We'll have red window frames and then our brick will be in a soldier course pattern, but it'll be a similar brick to what you see on the historic buildings. This is just to give you a sense of the type of windows we're proposing. Garage door, which will match the window color. Lighting. Pavers in front of the house and then the remainder of the driveway would be asphalt. Just showing the idea for a pool surround, which will be bluestone. Fencing that will be required around the pool. Which is a dark bronze metal fence. And that's the end of that part. I just want to go back to the site plan. The, the reasoning for the positioning of the building is to reflect the angles of the two existing historic buildings. So we're playing off the existing well building and the existing garage and tucking the building in, in front of those. This area here is the pool, which will be a hundred and five feet from the property line. I think that's about it for my presentation. Are there any questions?
Mr. Fleischer, do you know how many slides you had in this presentation? I'd like to mark this as exhibit A one and I just wanted to indicate how many slides.
Okay, just a moment. There are twenty-six slides.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Board members? I have one quick question. Are you using the historic building closest to the pool as a pool room, pool house, or you just leave it as is?
I think that would be better answered by the applicant.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. So the goal is to use it as a very small pool house. It's, it's, it's very small. That's, that's the idea. We don't know if it's going to happen immediately with the construction or maybe a little bit later.
I'm just curious. Thank you. Other questions?
The, the water easement, does the applicant know anything about this water easement?
I do, actually. I was earlier today looking at the boards, this, this very board's memo and Mr. Bridger, you can perhaps verify this either today or later. This is, this is our findings of fact, conclusions, and resolutions granted the variance that goes back to two years ago when we came in front of the board. And on that memo, it's written that it was testified that the water easement for the neighboring property has been abandoned and expired under its own terms once the neighboring property connected to public water. This is something that I could find as part of the memo and the extent of my knowledge on this.
Okay, so that.
Well, that's true. The, the resolution references testimony by your then-architect, Eric Holtermann. So this was his testimony.
Alright.
I don't, I don't.
I have no reason to believe otherwise. I, I've not heard anything different than this.
I see. I see what you're saying. I, I found it in the in the board's document. Thank you.
Of course.
Other questions? Michael? George?
No.
Nice. Did he want to, anything else you'd like to add before we go to the public comment? No.
Actually, actually, I have a, just a clarification for the applicant. There are a number of recommendations in the HPC memo. Are they all acceptable to the applicant? Would they comply with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, and also in the prior resolution, which this is Haeri referenced, there was a condition that the applicant would preserve and maintain the historic character of the existing garage, wellhouse, and windmill. Now, is that something you're still prepared to do?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll now open up for public comment. Anyone in the public who would like to speak, please hit the raise hand button and we will move you over to this part of the meeting. I don't see any hands. Why are you?
No, wait. Okay.
Okay. Candace McCoy and William Roder, would you like to speak? You're muted.
Sorry about that. It's, it's been a long night, I know, and, and I hope we can keep this fairly quick, but I'd like to know first, has the board received the, the letters that were sent in opposition to this variance from the neighbors?
Ms. McCoy, the problem is, I think, as the board secretary, I think advised you that the state municipal land use law requires testimony. So
Sure.
I believe letters, a letter or letters were received, but they would just go into the file for the application. They're not going to be presented to the board.
That's very unfortunate because we have several neighbors who are in opposition. I, I live at twenty-two Parkside directly across the street from the proposed house and Mr. Browder, William, Bill?
I'm at forty-five Parkside Drive, next door. It's in Kansas.
Right, and we both, I sent my own letter and so I'd appreciate it if that would be included. And I'm testifying to it tonight. Bill signed also, and I signed also, a second letter that had other neighbors. But considering that we both signed that letter, I would appreciate it if that letter be included as well. And we will, we will speak to it tonight.
Ms. McCoy, Ms. Browder, the letters will go into the, the file for the application. If you want to read your letter, you can into the record. That's fine. Anything that other neighbors, if, if you sign that letter, I'm comfortable with you reading it into the record. If it's a different letter, then it's, it's.
Okay, I, I, I know it's very late and it's, it's my bedtime, so I'm not going to read the letters.
But you can, if you want to summarize it, that's fine.
I will summarize and I think Bill will summarize. I hope that we've captured everything that has been said.
Okay.
I appreciate that, that everybody's up so late. And by the way, before I start, I look forward to meeting the Haieris, Haigeris. I, I look forward to good neighborly relations. It's just not under these circumstances. The neighbors oppose the variance and first of all, the application materials that we saw from April twenty-two are not currently how that lot looks. And in fact, the, the picture that was presented by Mr. Fleischer is not a current picture. The, the materials from April twenty-second and tonight say that those trees will be retained. They have been cut down. The, the lot was clear-cut. An alley of mature linden trees that would have shielded the Battlefield Park view that's gone. A native cedar tree, a very old tree that, that softened the appearance of the utility poles, gone. We protested. It didn't matter. This was very bothersome, extremely bothersome because, and this is all the neighbors who sent this letter, including me, strive hard to maintain the environment and look and historic character of the Battlefield Park, particularly with environmental stewardship. This proposed building is forty-seven-hundred square feet. All the other houses on Parkside, with the exception of the historic Drumthwacket pieces, are around two-thousand to twenty-five-hundred. They're all low-slung, one-story, mid-century modern, and we surround them with greenery and we work very hard to keep our property consistent with the Battlefield Park because we love it so much. That's why we're here. This already is off on the wrong foot by cutting down the trees. I would ask also, on the forty-seven-hundred square feet, does that include the historic outbuildings, the pool house, the garage, the historic? the historic garage? The reason I ask that is the materials from April and reiterated at the Historic Preservation Commission meeting, which two neighbors attended, the other one's not here tonight, stated that that historic building or the historic garage would be used as a studio. So that's more square footage than the forty seven hundred. I'm unsure if you're counting it or not. The problem, my personal issue, as I said, I live across the street here. In addition to the denuded lot at this point, there would be three parking places at the frontage where I am across the street. Those three parking places would be in addition to a two-car garage. And the historic garage, if they intend to use it as a garage instead of a studio, I have to wonder why all the parking. The Historic Preservation Commission, as Ms. Kim has pointed out, asked them to provide a buffer. Yeah, in a few decades, we'll have a buffer once it grows. In the meantime, this particular design is so out of character with the historic nature of the battlefield park. I wonder if it's possible to buffer it. I appreciate that the HPC has asked that a buffer be put in, but I'm going to be looking at these parking places and this hypermodern. By the way, I love this design. I think it's beautiful. I just don't think it belongs here. So the variance, oh, and by the way, I believe Mr. Bridger mentioned that in the previous go-round, when the the size of the building was reduced, which the neighborhood said, great, they're reducing it. Good. We're, you know, we didn't know. That's why we were quiet all along, but when the suggestion from this board was go to the neighbors and ask them if maybe they would sell you some adjacent slice of a property. And therefore you wouldn't need this variance, and most particularly, it wouldn't be so crowded with the size of this thing. I have spoken with these neighbors, at least two of them, Mr. Kumar, anyway. They were not approached. Ms. Carr, Mr. Kumar, they they were not approached. The assumption is that this thing can go forward, and I don't think it's a good idea. Well, in summary, I I think the variance is sought. Two variances. The pool is too close to the house catty corner to me. And so a variance is needed for that. And also a variance is needed for the top. I call it the top area. Instead of a hundred and fifty feet on the on Parkside, it's it's currently fifty. And I don't know what the law here is. All I know is that the zoning regulations say a variance would be given if it's a hardship to not proceed. I'd like to say that I think this design, the the applicants have created their own hardship. You can't claim a hardship that you yourself have created. Forty seven hundred square feet house plus two outbuildings, plus a large pool, plus five parking areas. All of it, you saw the size, how that lot looks. This would be one thing if all this were going to be on a nice rectangle. Like the previous one that we all sat through. This is not a nice rectangle. This is a like diamond thing with six different sides. And it's elongated. The way, I I know this isn't a legal term, but it's squished. It's it's squished. And and they have to put all of this, these buildings on that squished space, and they simply can't fit it in. So what the result is, is that I'm going to be looking at parking lot on a hypermodern building. No buffer buffers that I can imagine would be able to to, it all has to be up by that that frontage because they can't move it back. It's too narrow. Several people, and I myself, have wondered is this going to be an office? Why five places for five cars at a at a, in any event, I do feel that this footprint is just too big. And it's not that I and my neighbors are against having something there that is consistent with the historic nature of the battlefield area and also is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. We would like that and and we would welcome the Hayeres, but but not, not this. So thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Could I just say something?
You can, or you can wait until we're done with the public comment and then respond.
Okay, I'll wait then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Roder, you want to say something?
Do.
Oh, that's all right. Just talk to him.
Well, I must say that I find some of these things quite problematic. And this house, I'm afraid the way it's set up and designed is going to be a shock to the to the neighborhood and to the passersby. And it's really rather far out of the spirit of the battlefield in that area. And I worry also about the precedence of of giving these small these small changes in the regulations is opening wedge for much, much more later on. As we, my, my wife has a small house in Denmark. And there has been this drama with small changes in the regulations for many, many years, and it's been, the area's been transformed from a very bucolic portion of nearby shore into a forest of gray concrete. And of course, that's not our our problem here. But it's a warning. It's a warning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Claudia, are there any other neighbors who'd like to speak? I don't see any other hands. Okay, we'll close the
I'd just like to say before you close that by right, you could build up to a sixty five hundred square foot house on this lot. And it could be a two-story or thirty-five-foot-high house. And the the applicants are being very sensitive to the site and to the adjacent sites by making this building only sixteen feet high. Well below what they could do and with the the two historic buildings, they're at about forty eight hundred square feet. So they could add almost another two thousand square feet to that.
Please don't.
Yeah.
Please, God.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm closing the public comment, so thank you very much for your comments. We go back to the applicants now. If you have, if you have any other comments you'd like to make, Jeff, can you respond at all to the buffering points that were brought up?
Well, and we talked to that with HPC and and we're going to present the landscape design that will buffer the parking. And and that is the intent of the applicant.
Applicants, any other comments you'd like to make before we go to executive session?
Mr. Schreiber, do you want the applicant to address Mr. Bridger's comment that they should advise whether they have tried to obtain a property or whether it is not feasible to do so, given the size of the adjacent lots?
Thank you so much, Ms. Casey, Mr. Bridger. So I would like to share a slide. Possible, please. This is not the first time this board is seeing this slide, but since the topic came up. So this is our site. As we see, the the blue line basically are the borders of our, what we have. And we have two properties on each side. Again, this was presented prior to, in front of this board. The one to the right cannot be acquired because it's a historic structure. So we did look into that with an attorney the previous time. And the one, Mr. Kumar's house, cannot be acquired because by us acquiring their lot, they will be deficient and then they would need a variance. So this topic, I just wanted to bring the slide up, that this topic has been discussed before. We have pursued it. And to Mr. Fleischer's point, we have done anything and everything in our power. Ms. Cadence, I believe I did mention this to you in the HPC meeting as well. To lower the size, stay with one-story building. We care about the historic nature of the area with respect to the trees. Some of what, some of what you've explained today was news to me. But we had a previous design that was approved by all appropriate commissions and boardings, and with that previous design, we, some trees unfortunately were cut. It doesn't mean that it's going to be permanent. Everyone knows that you know, with every tree that's cut, something needs to be, we need to replace those, and we will work with HPC as it was mentioned earlier. So we are just happy to say that we think this design, the smaller size, the smaller, in the previous design, we also had two store, at least part of the house had two stories above the garage. And we eliminated that to also be more visually appealing. And I don't know if I've covered it all. I know, we do not intend to have five cars or five garages or any of that. The garage, the existing garage is not going to be used as a garage ever. That's why Jeff mentioned earlier that the driveway to that garage will be completely eliminated, so there will be no access for cars. We have two cars and we intend to keep them at two. We do, however, like to be able to drop off and pick up our elderly parents from our front door when the, when, when it's needed. So that's, that was the intent of that little area in front of, in front of our main door. As opposed to walking from the side to the front door. That was the intent of that design. Some of us who are aging, myself included, my husband with two back surgeries, we know that being able to, not being able to come directly to your front door and dropping off or picking up can be challenging, and we were mindful of that. That's the intent. So.
Ms. Hieri, the slide you just showed, could you provide a copy of that to the board secretary?
Absolutely, yes.
All right, and we'll, we'll just call that exhibit A2.
If you could I will, I will send that as an email tonight, but again, you know, this is, this should be part of the previous files of this lot.
I understand. I understand, but this way it'll be part of this record, too.
Happy to do so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now go into executive session. Look for comments, questions, motion. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, there's a hand by, on the corner on the left.
Public session is over, so you know. We're in executive session now. Comments?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I I think the frontage variance is straightforward. I I support that. And then the the pool variance is is really kind of the oddity of the lot. You know, i- if they address the HPC concerns regarding, you know, appropriate screening and landscaping and you know, the other HPC recommendations. I I would support this.
Good. Thank you. Other comments? Motion? Donna?
No, no questions.
Motion?
I'll move to approve it.
Thank you.
And Bernice, that would be then subject to the applicant complying with the HPC recommendations and that they will also retain and maintain the historic character of the three existing historic structures on the property. Is that correct? Okay.
Is there a second?
A second, Stein.
Thank you, George. Any other comments before we vote? Okay, Claudia, will you take the roll?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that's been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, I do, last minute, we did talk about trying to get together and we were going to forward Steve Cohen any suggestions for topics that we would like to have clarified for us. I heard you. If you haven't done so, you might do so now and forward comments, questions to him. And then we will schedule the meeting. Otherwise, Eric, Karen, anything else? I think we're done for the night.
No, nothing else.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
You.
Night.